Okay, now that we are all here, I'm going to call this special meeting of the Albany City Council to order. Could we please start with a roll call?
Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miki.
Here.
And Mayor Tiedemann.
Here. Now, we're going to move into our study session item, which is a discussion of the 2023 Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. And could we please have staffs report?
Yes. Good evening, Council. I'm Lizzie Carradon, the City of Albany Sustainability Coordinator. I'm joined this evening by Chief Boydo from the Fire Department and Jeff Bond from the Community Development Department. And tonight, we're presenting the update to the city's Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Next slide, please. Okay, so some brief background on the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. I'm going to refer to it as an LHMP, just to save my breath. The LHMP is a planning tool for identifying pre-disaster mitigation. That's not to be confused with an emergency operations plan, another plan that the city is required to have that addresses post-disaster emergency management. That's why most of the actions you see in the LHMP address actions we can take before a disaster to mitigate its impact, whereas an EOP addresses how we respond to a disaster if it happens. The Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 requires local governments to have an LHMP, and it's also a requirement for most FEMA hazard mitigation grants and assistance programs. So they prioritize sharing fundings with funding with local jurisdictions that have an LHMP. The city is required to update its LHMP at least every five years, and when we do the update, re-submit it to CAL-ES and FEMA. The way it works is we submit it to CAL-ES, and they review it to determine if we've met the basic FEMA requirements, and then CAL-ES shares it with FEMA, who ultimately gives it the stamp of approval. The 2023 LHMP reviewed prior to this meeting is an updated version of the original LHMP adopted by City Council in 2018, and that plan was approved by both FEMA and CAL-ES. And this new update is just an update of that 2018 LHMP, but we were informed by FEMA in the process of updating this plan that there are new guidelines by FEMA that take effect April 2023, but any plans submitted to FEMA after April 1, 2023, which there's a possibility that ours would be, have to conform to the new requirements. So that makes it look less like an update and more rewritten than I think you would expect from a traditional update to a plan. Next slide, please. The main element of the LHMP is the FEMA Required Risk Assessment, in which we are identifying all hazards to the community and analyze each with respect to location, extent, previous occurrence, future probability, and impacts and vulnerability. So the following slide lists all the hazards we included in the 2023 LHMP Risk Assessment. Next slide, please. I won't go through all the subbullets, but the main identified hazards we included in the risk assessment are earthquakes, public health epidemic, critical infrastructure and utility failure, wildland and urban fire, flooding, extreme temperatures, damaging winds, terrorism and mass violence, hazardous air quality, hazardous materials release, and slope failure and landslide. Next slide, please. As far as community engagement and stakeholder engagement, in February of 2022, we held an initial kickoff plan update to the Climate Action Committee. The Climate Action Committee provided feedback and suggested updates for us to consider, in addition to new hazards that we could analyze or new ways we could look at the hazards based on things that happened between 2018 and 2023. I don't know if anyone knows this, but we did experience a pandemic, and that was not included in the 2018, or not highlighted in the 2018 plan. We gave a presentation to Albany Cert Inc., I think this was prior to them becoming Inc., but the Albany Cert Group on May 17 of 2022. We've also been engaging with them via email to receive their public comments on the draft that you all received this evening. We provided a presentation to the CAC in February of 2023 and received feedback, as well as planning and zoning right around that time. We had an open public comment period from February 28 to March 13, and we did receive some comments that were attached to the draft. And then tonight, we're here for the March 20 Council Study Session. Next slide, please. You will, in a few months, hear from us again about an update to the general plan because the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan update triggers an update to the general plan's safety element. The safety element serves as a vehicle for LHMP implementation, so it establishes policies and programs and provides legal foundation for amendments to planning and zoning requirements and the CIP. Next slide, please. As far as next steps, staff will incorporate council feedback and public comment received this evening into the draft LHMP, and then we will send the final draft to CAL-ES for review. After CAL-ES reviews that plan and gives us the check, not the official stamp of approval, but the check of approval, we'll bring it back to City Council, or sorry, to CAC and P&amp;Z, who will recommend the LHMP to you all. And then we are hoping that Council will give us the okay to send it to FEMA for that stamp of approval. Also, in this timeline, we're hoping to update the safety element, which will look very, very similar to LHMP just pared down, have P&amp;Z recommend that to Council, and then we are hoping that we can bring one hazard mitigation package to Council in May or June for adoption. The safety element doesn't have to go to any outside agencies for review, so once Council approves the safety element, it will be woven into the general plan, but the LHMP, once we get Council's okay, will be sent to FEMA for that final approval. Next slide, please. Important notes for tonight's study session. We're still awaiting some maps from CAL-Fire. There was a note in the plan that we were awaiting maps. We thought they would come before the final plan goes to CAL-ES, or sorry, the draft plan goes to CAL-ES. The maps will likely not be available for another six to 12 months, so we're going to include the last final version of those CAL-Fire maps, which are from 2007. Apologies, it says 2022 up there. After CAL-ES reviews and approves the plan, the city cannot make any major changes to the plans, so any feedback you have on the LHMP should be given to us tonight, because if we come back in a few months with another version of the plan and we make extensive edits, we'll have to go back to CAL-ES and delay the timeline. Just a reminder that the LHMP is the plan that addresses pre-disaster mitigation, and the EOP addresses post-disaster emergency management and response. And we did seek, as I mentioned earlier in a previous slide, public comment from CAC, P&amp;Z, and also the general public. And we also received some feedback from outside agencies, including AUSD, Alameda County Department of Environmental Health, and EBC. Next slide. That's all I have. I will take any questions you have, and I'll be helped if there are any technical questions by Chief Boydo and Jeff Bond.
Thank you very much. We go to Council for questions. Anybody want to start us off?
Yeah, I have a question. Did the, does FEMA guidance cover the risk assessment scoring? And if it does, does it require adding the probability to the impacts? Because I can provide you motivation for that question, but...
So FEMA does not have any specific, we actually emailed with them a lot about this question. They don't have any specific requirements for how you rank the hazards, but they say you must rank the hazards based on how you think is the right way to come up with probability and impact to the community. So we follow the same model that was included in the 2018 plan. So there was no real reason behind why we did the 2023 update version the way we did, just following the 2018 version. But to answer your question, no, there's no prescribed way, just a mandate that you must do one.
Okay. Thank you. Then I'll come back to it in deliberation.
Any other questions? Just a process question. As you mentioned, the EOP is where we talk about post-stuff. Is, is there, are we going to discuss that at any point down the road? Flash, could we? The emergency operations procedure.
Yes, absolutely. That plan is under draft right now, and we, go ahead, Chief.
That is in the process of being developed right now. So we're updating the plan that we, that we have already. We're taking into considerations the changes over the last five years, much like the LHMP. You saw a few emphasis on different pandemic and things like that. So all of those pieces will be gone through, updated to meet the new standards, new resources, both locally and regionally, and then also new standards that have been developed by FEMA for our EOPs. And it'll come back to you, much like this, the same process, going through all the different committees. That'll be brought to you for review, your comments. We'll take the comments, come up with a final draft, and then present that to you all for your approval. And then we'll be submitting it as well.
Thank you. If there are no further questions...
As part of that, we'll also have a training on, on implementation and what that means at the policy level.
Exactly, yeah. So everyone will have their, their chance to practice using the plan and their specific roles as policymakers, as department heads, heads of branches, divisions and such. So, in, in training type environments, hopefully, not in real life.
Great. Thank you. If there are no other questions, then we will go to public comment.
None.
None? Then we'll bring you back for council commentary. Someone want to start us off?
Sure. So I'll preface this by, by saying that I actually do risk assessment and risk mitigation for my day job. So for instance, I have a contract with the state to review the risk management plans for the natural gas storage facilities in the state. So I'll try not to go too far into the weeds. So to start out, I, and this isn't about the risk assessment, but I noticed that the city profile has a lot of out-of-date data. It seems to be not adjusted from the prior version of the plan. So I'd be happy to work with staff on that if staff is interested and the council's interested in having me do that. But yeah, there were a lot of things that were, that were out of date in there. In terms of hazards, I thought it would be useful to change some of the hazard categories slightly. So it said public health endemic, I think. I don't, I don't know if that, I can't recall if there's a slide that has the hazards.
Epidemic.
Epidemic, right, okay. Which I think, no, I think if you say public health emergency, maybe that would be better, because that covers pandemic, epidemic. Another, I'll call it scenario, and I'll get to the idea of scenario that could be in there is 80s egypti invasion. So it's the invasion of a invasive mosquito, this disease vector, and would be very fit to reproduce in Albany in particular. So that could cover all of those things as a hazard category. I would simplify the infrastructure, I can't remember what the category, oh yeah, I would simplify the infrastructure, critical infrastructure utilities failure, or just critical infrastructure failure or infrastructure failure. Period critical kind of gets into the rating of the probabilities and the consequences. Instead of wildland or urban fire, I would just call it fire, since that covers, implies both. Rather than have two hazards for severe weather, I would just have the hazard be severe weather, and then heat wave and damaging winds can be scenarios within that hazard area. And then on terrorism, mass violence, that could just be violence, whereas terrorism and, say, riot would be two scenarios within that hazard. And I can, I can send all this to you, I've got a spreadsheet. So the idea was to simplify those, and part of the reason for this is, mentioning this word scenario, in risk assessment, it really can't be done in terms of assigning probabilities and impacts without a specific scenario. And so I've run into this again in my professional work. And so what would happen with these hazard categories is each one would have one or more scenarios that the city would pick, and it would presumably pick, you know, a priori, the ones it thinks is going to have the highest risk. And then those, those scenarios would be listed on the table where you've got probability and impact. And so it'd be a little clearer what, what it is that you're actually rating. So for instance, an infrastructure failure, a scenario could be, you know, the Edmud Switch Treatment Plant shuts down. And so we are no longer allowed to send sewage out. So that would be a scenario. You come up with a lot of scenarios under that, and the idea is to find the one that has the highest risk and then work towards that one, because otherwise it's, it's pretty nebulous. So that's sort of, as I say, the standard of how it's done in the industry. And then in terms of how those, those valuations are handled, it's probability times the consequences or times the impacts, not plus. So those are multiplicative, is again the standard. I can give you some examples where that makes a difference, but it does can make a difference between them. So maybe with that, I'll, I'll stop, and I'm happy to work with you all, again, since I fortunately or unfortunately have some professional knowledge in this area, which can be helpful and can be annoying as well, I understand, so.
I have one follow-up question. When you were saying severe weather, can you, can you explain what you mean?
Yeah, so instead of, in the, in the hazard categories, it had, I can't remember what it was, it was like damaging winds, forensic severe weather, high heat or extreme temperatures. So just put those both under severe weather, and then each of those would be a scenario. And so you, you would, you'd have your hazards, and then you have your scenarios for each hazard. And the scenario is more, gives you more specific. And so when somebody looks at the rating of probability and consequences, it's, it's a little more obvious, like, what the connection is.
Got it, got it.
And, yeah, and so, so I'm not saying throw those out, I'm just saying it would be more, I guess, more of a hierarchy.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Just for the, for the ranking exercise.
For the, yeah, for that one table where you've got the...
Got it. Okay, okay.
And then I have some suggestion on the rankings, too, but I've, should I keep going? Okay. At the, at the mayor's behest, I will, I will keep going. For prob...
This is your bailiwick, go for it.
Yeah, okay. For, for probability, I would suggest eliminating the occurred in the last five years, because that's not really relevant to what's going to happen in the, in the future. And, and it can mislead, we all as humans tend to think about what just happened to us, and we're going to plan for what just happened to us, but then you can send yourself in a direction that is actually not the highest risk of what you're facing in the future. So I would suggest deleting that from the category three for probability. And I would suggest making category one likely to occur in 1,000 years, which I know sounds kind of crazy, but the number two is likely to occur in 100 years. Currently, category one is not likely to occur in 100 years, and category zero is no probability of occurrence. So I would, I would suggest using 1,000 years for category one. And then for, and again, I've got all this, I'll, I'll send it to you, send it all to you. For impacts, I would suggest for number three, that it would be fatalities and injuries. So if there's fatalities and injuries, so rather than a percent of the population impacted, because you could have 100% of the population that's inconvenient, because the power goes out for three hours. Or you could have somebody killed. I would submit that somebody being killed is a lot more consequential than the power going out for three hours. So fatalities, maybe fatalities and severe injuries, which I know is defined somewhere at least in the Switters world, the accident collision world, road collision world. And then number two and number one would be, I don't know, number one might be, or number two might be 75 to 100%, 25% to 100% of the population is impacted in some way, and one might be, you know, 1% to 25%, and zero would be less than 1%. I would suggest adding two more impact categories, which I know makes it complicated, but I would add government and utilities. And the reason I suggest adding government is because government is one of the things that's being sought in these analyses of what are the, what is the critical pathway. And so if government isn't functioning, then that makes it a lot harder for anything else to recover. And so understanding specifically how government is impacted can give you more texture to what's happening in the scenario and what the risk is. So suggest categories there, it could be, number three would be if first responders are, if their ability to respond is degraded, since that's the most important thing in a disaster. So that, you know, that could be, not the thought this is going to happen, but the firehouse door doesn't open, or the firehouse, you know, is, is partially collapsed. Fortunately, we've taken care of that, so I don't want to make anybody nervous and think that's going to happen. The community's been good in putting up money to make sure that doesn't happen, and the fire department's done a great job with the door. Category two might be public works' ability to respond is degraded, because if public works can't respond, then it's, you know, various infrastructure systems can't be restored as quickly. Beyond that, and even those, I would say, use your, your expertise, because I don't know, you know more than I do about what government entities respond, what aspects of government need to respond first and foremost. For utilities, again, because you can have utilities go out and, you know, not much else, but that can have a huge impact. And we're looking at, when you have utilities that are, I presume you're having that not, not utilities going out as a consequence of an earthquake scenario, or as a consequence of a severe weather scenario, because that's going to be included in those scenarios, but going out other on a court because utilities fail. So I would put number three as sewage. If sewage goes out, that's the most consequential for a dense civilization in terms of disease. Water, probably next, maybe electricity and gas after that. I know everybody thinks communication's the most important, but it actually isn't necessarily for, for survival at the first, at least in the first hours. Property, I don't remember what the categories were that were there, but it was something like low likelihood, moderate, high likelihood. But those likelihoods were handled kind of more in the probability. And so in the consequence world, I would make it a dollar, like a dollar amount, or a percentage of the parcels in the city or the buildings in the city that are affected. So one scale I came up with was greater than $100 million for three, $5 to $100 million for two, $100,000 to $5 million for one, and under $100,000 for zero. You can pick whatever numbers you want, but that kind of gives the idea of sort of a logarithmic or geometric scale. And then somewhat the same thing on the economy. And again, you know, we're not going to expect extreme calculations on these, but, but qualitatively, greater than 10% decline in economic activity might be three, 2 to 10% for two, half a percent to 2% for one, and less than half a percent for zero. And so that would, that would provide quantification, well, I would say semi-quantification for those impacts. And often what is also done in risk assessment is there might be a weighting factor applied, so not all of these would have equal weight. Population probably would have the highest weight. Then I would say government next, and then maybe utilities, property, and economy are equal in weight. So again, I'll share all this with you, so I'm expecting you to remember it all. Yeah, so I think that'll, that'll align the, the risk assessment with what's sort of standard practice in the industry.
Okay, great. I did memorize all that, so don't worry.
Yeah, okay. I know you did, you're swift. Keep going, okay. The, let's see. On mitigation, and I think this gets into the topic of a next meeting, strategic planning. So if we look at the mediation timelines for the last plan, it, it, I don't know, you call it proposed, maybe committed, I don't know what the, the meaning of these timelines is, but the timeline shows 2018, 2019, for instance, for adopting the soft story retrofit ordinance, which we haven't done yet. So... So I don't know what we have to put there, it's required by OES and FEMA, but I would recommend caution. And at the nexus with the strategic plan, you know, there's a lot of these planning documents floating around, and they each put burden on staff to get certain things done. I have to admit, I haven't looked at the strategic plan information that the manager sent us yet. I think there was something that came today. But I think it would be useful, and maybe it's already in there, to have the aggregate of all these plans presented, and at least for the council to consider including the strategic plan. Because if these are milestones that the city has adopted, then there should be in the strategic plan. And then we can sort of see how burdensome is it, and is there any latitude to do any more than what has already been committed via all these other plans that are being adopted in parallel. Specifically on mitigation, I think tsunami response planning is needed. That might be, well, it would have to happen in coordination with UC, because the largest area that is under the tsunami inundation warning on the map is the western half of University Village. So I don't know if the university's aware of that, but it might be good for them to be aware of, and to have some plan in coordination with the city. And then of course, is that, I think it was the two blocks, one block west of Pierce, north of Buchanan, was also shown as inundated in that map. I don't know if that's actually the case, I have a feeling that map is done block by block, and even those blocks have some slope, so it's really only the first, oh yeah, thanks. It's really only the first, you know, I would say, few buildings that probably are actually likely to have any risk. In terms of groundwater rise, this might have been hit to that, but I'm not sure it was clear in there. The green infrastructure facilities, the stormwater treatment basins that have perforated subdrains installed in them, it actually occurred to me, those are a groundwater table mitigation, as well as, I mean, they both provide recharge when the water table's below those, and they provide control when the water table is trying to come above those. And so in thinking about that, if those were tactically deployed for mitigation, that would suggest putting more emphasis on installing those in areas where the water table's already shallow, so that we can control that water table, so it doesn't actually come up and intersect the ground surface. So I, you know, it would take more work to figure out what parts of the city the water table's shallow, unless staff already happens to know that. It's actually not about a time of year to walk around and figure out where the water table is shallow, because anywhere the gutters are running a week after rains, you know, there's shallow groundwater in the area, either because it's being pumped out by sumps, or we're actually intersecting the ground surface. So that might be a useful mitigation. Sorry, my machine just went to sleep on me. Yeah, so that's what I have. And as I say, I'm happy to work with staff in whatever capacity staff would find it helpful, or the council would want me to do so.
Thank you for sharing your expertise. Are there any other comments from council? Okay. I think that means we're mostly in agreement with what Preston said, which all sounds good to me, and thank you for putting this together. It seems like it was a lot of work, and it's very detailed. And I guess we will look forward to it coming back to us after it hopefully gets a seal of approval after we've made some changes, and then it'll go through climate, sorry, was it climate?
Climate Action Committee and Planning and Zoning.
Great. Then we will look forward to it coming back then. One more?
I think in the staff report, the recommended action was to approve sending the draft to OES.
Yes. After we've made the changes requested this evening.
Okay, okay.
So do you need direction this evening, or do you need a motion?
I don't think we need a motion. I think we just need feedback, and then the okay to send it to CalOES, knowing that when we bring it back in a few months, there can't be any major changes, because if there are, we have to go back to CalOES versus just going forward to FEMA.
Great. So we don't need a motion, but looking around the dais, seem like we have the okay to go through with that process. Great. Then you have everything you need from us?
I believe so. I do need that email with all your notes. After that.
Yeah, yeah.
Then yes.
Yeah, thanks.
Right, right. I did great notes.
Yeah, thanks all for doing this work. Very much appreciated.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And that was our only item in our study session, so we are going to adjourn until our regularly scheduled meeting at 7:00 PM.
Great, we are going to call this regular meeting of the Albany City Council to order. Welcome, everybody. And, let's see, I will read our land acknowledgement. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of LaShawn. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye Tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. City Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Hansa Romero?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Here.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Here. I believe that now brings us to the City Manager's Report. City Manager, can we please have your report?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to summarize our E-News from last Friday. And as a reminder, our E-News is something that anyone can subscribe to by going to our website and clicking a few boxes. As noted in the E-News, we had a very sweet celebration with Albany Friendship Club for Holly. Photos should come here, which is all about colors. And we will see more of these events at the Friendship Club as new holidays and experiences are brought forward. Also, please save the date for the Albany Community Expo, scheduled for Saturday, April 29th, at the Community Center from 10:00 to 2:00. This is an opportunity to basically wander around our Community Center and learn just about everything you can about Albany, including all of our department representation, as well as nonprofits and local organizations within the city. Staff is reaching out now to those organizations to make sure that they have space at the event, so please get in touch with city staff if you would like to have a table, but we will also be reaching out directly. Also, a reminder about Women's History Month, and that we are still within the month of Women's History. Scrolling down to the bottom of our webpage here is an image of what we have up at our Community Center. I wanted to hover on this for a minute, because while we are a virtual presence predominantly for a lot of our information, we also have this in-person at our Community Center, actually thanks to a suggestion by one of our community members. So you will see this displayed over time as proclamations come through the City Council and physical information and resources at our Community Center. An update from Public Works. You see that we are starting our shaving maintenance work. We kicked off the annual sidewalk shaving maintenance today in Zone 3. The department performs this maintenance task annually to extend the life of sidewalks that are basically in decent shape, with minimal interruption for public access. Again, visiting our website here, you can see updates that are regularly updated, I may go here frequently, on construction status. And I wanted to also highlight our jobs available, which is going from our main page to Human Resources, Employment Opportunities. We're proud of this online portal, which houses all of our recruitments in one place. It helps through the onset of a recruitment, all the way to completion of a recruitment. And one position, among many, that we're hiring for is this new position of Habitat Restoration Interns. This is a unique opportunity funded by Coastal Conservancy grant funds. There'll be two positions, seasonally, one in the spring and one in the fall, or thereabouts. These are for college-level individuals looking to gain expertise in ecology, specifically related to our Albany Hill Habitat. So I would encourage councilmembers to please forward this information, as we will always post our job availability to this site, but in particular, that unique opportunity is something we're very proud to be offering. And, I believe, oh, no, one more important thing. Photo credit to former, excuse me, Councilmember Peggy McQuaid. These are our newest addition to Solano Avenue, our rainbow crosswalks at two intersections, which were installed last Friday, Friday. So you have the rain and the imagery here, which puts an interesting background color to it, but they're really welcome additions. So really wanted to thank staff for having the flexibility to build this into standard Public Works contract, and also the foresight of our community members for making this happen, as well as the council for the approval. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for your report. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, we will go to public comment. If anyone attending would like to ask a question about or comment on the City Manager's Report, please press Raise Your Hand button, or come to the dais. You'll have one minute. If you're on the phone, please press *9. This is for questions and comments on the City Manager's Report only. If you have questions on matters not on the agenda, the time for those is next. In this and all comments and questions during the meeting, please address the council, not other attendees, and respect each person that has spoken.
Hello, have I been asked to speak?
Yes, you are hearable.
My name is Julie Ann Sterling, and I am an Albany resident and parent. My son, Adley, age 16, was hit as a pedestrian in the crosswalk last night at the corner of Marin and Key Route. Now, the city took out all four corners of our crossing Marin there, and pushed him to cross where there is no signal and no light at Masonic and Key Route. Now, he is not that hurt. We went to Children's Hospital for x-rays today, but you have got to do something about that intersection immediately. Officers on duty said that they've had complaints before, but now you have an injured child.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any others?
Good evening, everybody. Jeremiah Garrett Gumbolo here. Sorry to hear there's an injury in the crosswalk regarding a child. Yeah, regarding the Manager's Report, actually, so, yeah, it's a question and a positive suggestion at the same time. So the rainbow crosswalk, I guess that's what we'll call it, is the rainbow-colored crosswalk. I think that looks great. I'm so happy it's finally in. It's very visible. It's really eye-catching. And I was wondering if we could make that the new standard to paint crosswalks around the school? Because right now, the only difference between a school crosswalk and a regular crosswalk is yellow instead of white for the two lines. But if we can somehow incorporate this rainbow to all crosswalks around schools, that would be, that would be great. Please and thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. I know that first one was tangentially related, but I don't know if we have anything to say about the safety measures we've tried to put in place on construction.
We're still looking into the issue relayed there in terms of We're still looking into the issue relayed there in terms of lighting and any other issues that we can immediately resolve. The construction remains underway and unfortunately has been stymied due to our weather patterns. You can't pour concrete when it's wet or will be wet. And so we got one corner in this Saturday. I saw the crews myself. We have some corners remaining and unfortunately, just not the way that the project was intended to play out, but we have all of our energy focused on making those repairs happen.
Great, thank you. We now move on to Good of the City. This is for attendees to write council comments, information, and questions on any item that is not on the agenda. Please raise your hands now, and by phone again, that's star nine. By state law, known as the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, except under extraordinary circumstances. Rather, items raised may be referred to the future agenda or staff for comment.
Good evening, Jeremiah Garrett-Pingwell here. Yeah, so I'm umpiring Albany Little League, and we just had opening day on Saturday. Sunday was rained out. But as I was umpiring down at the Ocean View Baseball Field, I noticed between my 3:00 and 6:00 game, the community garden back there. I haven't been back there in the Redwood Forest and noticed that community garden for a long time. But if that's a city community garden, if that's somehow associated with the city, it's really great, and we should use that as an example to possibly put other raised beds around Albany and other parks. But that's a great example of how a community gardens can work in the City of Albany. So I just want to give a compliment to the community gardens back there. Also, I noticed the playground actually needs lighting at nighttime. I'm not sure how many people or kids are going to be playing on the playground, but the stairs for the slides are very dark, and I just wouldn't want somebody to get injured over there at nighttime. So the lighting for the actual playground is really poor at nighttime up until 10:00. So if you've got kids playing at night, it's really dangerous. So there could be some more lighting down there. So also, I want to use the rest of my public comment to continue to raise awareness about the fentanyl epidemic that's plaguing our community. I know that my high school friend, Chris Castle, passed away a couple months ago, and his brother Josh Castle passed away last year from a fentanyl accidental poisoning. And Mr. Castle lives and works on Solano, and both of his sons are now gone. I just think it would be great if City Council would adopt some resolution or get some sort of future agenda item on education for our community, where Narcan can be picked up, or support for a Senate bill, I think 1060. But last year, I brought to the school district, actually, since I was the school district's rep for the SEJC, I brought fentanyl awareness to the school district with One Pill Can Kill campaign. And ever since I spearheaded that, the entire school district is now trained and certified, all the teachers carry Narcan in their classrooms. So maybe we can get that going for actual city. We can have Narcan at the Community Center, Narcan at the, you know, around city buildings, and more awareness for people and children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay. Go for it.
Yeah, I think it would be useful, if possible, seeing that the fire chief is here, may know. Is Narcan available in various places in the city, or is it only available for first Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, for sure. Good evening, council. So we have Narcan on our rigs, obviously, like the first responder rigs, so the ambulance engine. I believe the police department carries it as well. Sounds like the school district may or may not, I haven't confirmed that. And I just, we're looking into getting it into researching what it would take to get into city buildings and such. I had some correspondence with the Open D program through the county. They're the official trainer and supplier of overdose kits to the public. So we're working on, and that was just today, just working on the logistics of that, what it would take, at least to get it to city staff and those into the city buildings and then the library, since it's right there at the Community Center. So I don't have all the numbers on exactly where they are, but we're working towards a solution sooner than later.
Well, I'm just very enthused that you were working on it just today, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, glad it'd be timely.
Yeah. Thank you. Unless there's anything else, then we move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine, and staff recommendation will be adopted by one motion unless otherwise modified. And there will be no separate discussion on these items unless councilmember or member of the audience requests discussion on them separately. Do any councilmembers wish to pull any items for discussion?
Number six, please.
Number six? Over here? No? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to discuss any item excluding 7/6, which we are already going to pull for separate discussion? And we're just getting the items, and then you'll make your comment when we go to them for discussion.
Yes, thank you, Ann, for bringing me in. Jeremiah here. 7/4, please.
Okay, then we will go to 7/4, which is advisory body appointments. And if you'd like to bring a member of public in to speak.
Thank you. So Jeremiah here again. You know, I'm noticing, Mayor Tiedemann, thank you for appointing somebody to the SEJC, but I'm also noticing, you know, later on, I'm not trying to switch topics or jump agenda items, but it looks like you're appointing somebody to the Social Economic Justice Commission, but then later in this meeting, that entire commission's going to be sunsetted, and then a new commission's going to be sunrise. So are all the appointments for the SEJC, you know, are they going to be sunsetted? Because you're appointing somebody to a commission that's going to be no longer. So are these people going to be reappointed, you know, next meeting after the new name rise? Are they going to be reappointed to the new commission? I mean, how does the logistics work on that? And just kind of just wondering the technicalities, you know, because technically, you're appointing somebody to the SEJC, but that's, you know, commission's going to be sunsetted. So are you going to reappoint? Is this entire city council going to reappoint people to the new commission once it's sunrise? So I'm just wondering how that goes. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. Yes, I anticipate getting exactly this question due to what our agenda has on it. I'll say on my part, because of the timing of this appointment, I did discuss this with the appointee and said, it's called this now, it will be called this later. Are you interested in serving on whatever it's called? I think our idea, and we'll discuss this more fully when it comes up on the agenda, is that everyone who's currently appointed to the SEJC will continue on with rise. I don't know if we know the exact process of if we have to put it on agenda or just make it go through, but that's the idea. And again, we will discuss this probably a little bit more later on in the agenda. That brings us to 7/6.
Thank you. I don't know if public works director and city engineer would like to make a presentation on this, or I should go ahead and present the result? Okay. So working with city staff, when I came into office, I observed that anecdotally, there were a few streetlights that were not functioning on wooden poles, and so working with city staff over a couple of years, put together data and ran a volunteer effort to go out and just count the diodes in each fixture and how many of them were operating. So City Clerk, if you could put up the slides. So it's maybe useful conjunction in time with this contract that this is coming through. So I'd like to recognize volunteers Guy Chini and Tim Neefsey, who helped out with this. And so this only regards streetlights on wooden poles, because those ones are observed that they were lights out. So what this shows is a map of all the streetlights that are on wooden poles. Most of them are power poles. There are a few dedicated wooden poles for lighting only. And the lighter, the color, pardon me, the more diodes that are working. So yellow, more than 75% of the diodes are working, or less than 25% are not working. And then going in even increments to dark blue or purple, depending upon your particular color site, more than 75% of the diodes are out. And so you can see there's quite a few lights that are pretty much out at this point. If you can go to the next slide. And so this is just a histogram of function of lights by those categories. And so you can see if you take, say, consider more than half the diodes being out as essentially failed, you can see one out of three of lights has failed. When I came into office, I did a quick sample, and at that time, my impression was about, the sample I had came up with one out of 10. I haven't run the p-value, but probably this suggests that the lights are failing rather than that it was a sampling effect. If you go to the next slide. Thank you, City Clerk. And so this is the histogram for the eastern, very eastern portion of Albany. As you can see, about one out of five lights is in that more than half the diodes have failed. And if you go to the next slide. And so this is the eastern portion of central Albany, it's one out of four. And if you go to the next slide, it's one out of three in the western central portion of Albany, and then two out of three west of San Pablo. So I found it a little alarming, this pattern, particularly that people west of Albany are largely in the dark on their streets. And so the reason I show all this at this time is to suggest, I mean, why I got into this when I came into office was, you know, the first mission is always to maintain what you have or restore what you have. The circles on this map are fairly representative of the spread of the lights. So you can see, you know, our streets are not continuously lit, but dealing with that problem is a capital expenditure as compared to maintaining the lights that we have. And so I was interested in helping gather the information so that we could accelerate the maintenance and the restoration of these lights. But now we're at this point of having a lighting consultant, and so I have some thoughts around that. And my thought is, would it be possible to run the work with the consultant so that it was front-loaded to benefit from their expertise on how to restore what we have, and then, you know, have them take up, how do we do better? How do we have more lighting after that? So, because I really don't want to go through another winter with this situation. So, thank you, Director Hurley.
Mark Hurley, Public Works Director. And first of all, thank you for the work you've done. It is, you know, this has been one of the systems that has been a little bit on autopilot, where these lights were, LEDs or the lights were put in about 10 years ago, and from what we understand, we're actually a little more than 10 years, probably close to 15 years now, and they are reaching the end of their life, so we need to deal with this. And you bring up a good point, that we need to deal with what we have before we think about adding new. Within the analysis, though, the extent of the replacement is such that we want to have some guidance from the consultant on what fixtures to replace, because this opens up the issue of how much lighting do we want? What's the spread? What's the, how warm is the lighting? So that's included in the analysis, and it's in tasks two and three. So we're going to talk with them about pushing that up a little bit more in the schedule. But our anticipation is, we don't necessarily need to finish our analysis to get the fixtures to start the repairs. So I'm hedging a little bit there. We could probably move that up a couple weeks in our schedule. We have it lined out to start within the first month of, you know, pressing go. So if we can move that up, we will. But our intention is to figure out what fixture we want to use where, and then start with the repair, or the replacements.
Great, thank you. I'm excited by that, obviously. Somebody or some buddies also brought up the question of, does the city pay a fixed cost for the power for each light, or does it pay for the amount of power that the light uses?
So it's a fixed cost per light based on the type of light. And so I think one of the tasks we're going to get out of the inventory is a roster of what lights we have, and compare that to PG&E's list, and do essentially an audit on that. But in terms of using, our lights are using less power than projected, I think, I'm not sure we're going to get a rebate from PG&E.
Okay. You can see where I was going with that.
Right.
Yeah, and so I thank you for providing the data, and I did go through the PG&E spreadsheet. And if you compare it to the GIS layer that the project produced, there were some lights that were assigned to Albany that are not in Albany, so.
So one of the benefits about this consultant team, Avare, the GIS consultant, they work regularly with PG&E on audits for other areas, so I'm hoping we can leverage their expertise on that side of it.
Great, thank you very much.
All right.
That is it.
Okay. Let the commitment of Councilmember Jordan never be doubted, as I assume that took a lot of walking around at night in Albany, hand-counting LEDs. Let's go to public comment for this item, if there is any.
Thank you, Jeremiah Garrett-Pingwell here. Yeah, so I believe it was about 10 years ago, when the older city clerk was the city clerk, I forget her name, but she wore glasses, she had gray hair, she was, she always sat at that passport desk, I forget her name, but she's no longer here. Yeah, so I noticed a lot of streetlights out in Albany about 10 years ago, and I went through Albany, I wrote down about 200 street poles with lights that were out, about 10:00 at night, other streetlights were on, but these streetlights, the bulbs were out. And that was with the old light bulbs. So I turned that list into the city clerk, and she says, wow, Jeremiah, this is a lot of lights that are out. And so she said it's really expensive to replace those old halogen light bulbs or those old light bulbs. And later that year, about six months later, the, what's it called? The other commission, environmental, electric commissions, I'm blanking right now. But that commission, they got some sort of $400,000 grant from the state, and then all the lights were updated to LED lights in Albany later that year. And so I do remember that. But I was glad to bring awareness to the city with that huge list of over 200 lights that were out. So now, these LED lights have been burning their LED diodes for 10, 12 years or so. And I'm just wondering, when those were installed, shouldn't we already have a list of what lights were installed? You know, 10 years, I know it's 10 years ago, I'm not sure how well Albany keeps records, but when those were installed, we should have the part number, we should have, you know, some sort of data on the light bulbs that were installed. So we shouldn't have to pay close to $200,000 again to figure out what types of lights were installed. We should already have that. You know, it's a lot of money, $174,000, and it looks like our volunteers did a lot of work already. So I'm just wondering, $174,000 for a couple people to tell us what we should do as a consultant, to me, is kind of a waste of money, because it's probably going to cost another $174,000 to actually buy new light bulbs. So we should just replace all the ones that are failing right now. Let's just go ahead and spend the $200,000 on actually buying the hardware and just go reinstall them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any more on this one? Mark, I don't know if you have, you sort of covered it a little bit in answer to the precedent, but if you want to say of, you know, why this process is necessary and what it helps us do in addition to gearing up to actually replace light bulbs or LEDs.
So from my perspective, I think the most important piece out of this is setting lighting standards for various areas within the city. And that one include residential areas, the commercial areas, key crossings to improve. So it's, it's not just replacing lights, it's adding lights in areas where are underlit and maybe some areas might be overlit. I don't know. But kind of that baseline information so that can guide our replacements in a way that's more structured than it is right now, which is essentially a complaint driven approach.
Great. Thank you.
If I could offer, yeah, so my thought is that, and I appreciate the timing of when this will be done, because this is one of the things I hear most often when I'm going door to door for various reasons, is lighting in the city. So we may get lucky and the consultant may be able to recommend some replacement fixtures, replacement lamps that give us a spread of lighting that will provide more continuous lighting. But we may need to add fixtures as well. And so I look forward to seeing what comes out of this contract, because it may provide us the basis for going for some kind of a capital funds measure, take that to the voters. And if they want more lighting, then they can get more lighting, or not. It'll be up to them. But we'll at least have an objective engineering basis upon which to go to the voters with that request.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, because I know your report, I believe that was only the wooden pole lighting, but you're going to be examining all, including the metal poles as well. Is that correct?
Sure. So that's one of the struggles with all of this. There's different data sources. And so the first task is an inventory that's getting inventory, all the lights, including the BART lights on the Greenway. So we're going to have a, probably for the first time, a completely integrated GIS layer for all of our lighting. And again, that allows us to audit PG&E and say, how are we, are we getting paid, are we paying correctly? And then it makes us decision, gives us a basis for making decisions on replacement and adding. And I think we're going to try to include vacant poles. So that gives us a basis of where we can add lights to increase lighting.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, well, after that was the first step of the project, was taking three different data sources and casing them together. Because the city didn't have a GIS layer for where those wooden pole lights were. And that was about as much as I could handle. Even me, I have my limit.
Great. Thank you, Mark. I'll just briefly note, this has a nexus with something we're going to talk about later in the agenda about street safety. So hopefully this is, you know, it's useful to talk about right now, because a big part of that report is lighting. With that, I will look for a motion on the consent agenda.
I will move the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been motion seconded. City Clerk, can we please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hansa Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to the first of our two presentations. The first is item 81, a letter and resolution of opposition to initiative 210042A1. And is this from staff or is this from Councilmember Jordan?
I think we have our East Bay Cal Cities representative here.
Perfect.
Thank you for making the trip. I don't know how far it is, but thank you.
I'm happy to be here. I'm Sam Kegel. I'm the East Bay Regional Public Affairs Manager for the League of California Cities. It's always good to be in Albany, and I actually spend a lot of time here, because people who are nearest and dearest to me live here, my sister and her family, and my two wonderful nephews. So I got to see them before here. So I always try to sneak in a hug.
We can try to give you more excuses.
Please do. My sister and the boys would be thrilled. So a little bit about us, before I do my presentation, Cal Cities is your advocacy voice in Sacramento. We do legislative, regulatory, legal, and statewide ballot measure advocacy for you and the 479 cities who are members of Cal Cities. We also offer a wide array of conferences and educational programming for our members to attend to help you better serve your cities. I want to say thank you to all of you, as well as your wonderful city staff, for being engaged with us to make sure that Albany has a seat and a voice at the table. So thank you. So today, I'm here to talk about the California Business Roundtable Initiative. This has officially qualified for the November 2024 ballot. Cal Cities was an early opponent to this measure. And now that it has qualified, it's time to ramp up our opposition and make sure our members are educated and aware of what this is and how it could negatively impact you. Before I talk specifically about the measure and our strategy, I want to provide some context on ballot measures generally, and our track record of success in engaging in ballot measure campaigns. You'll see on this, there you go, that's perfect, this slide right here. Here are some highlights from several winning campaigns we have engaged in going back to 2004, which is what you see on the right, the most recent on the left. You'll see here the budgets for these campaigns. The total budget is that top yellow number, and then the Cal Cities contribution is that bottom yellow number. And you can kind of observe through time that campaigns continue to become more and more expensive. And just to give you a frame too, for background, in 2020, the average campaign spend was just short of $37 million. And in 2022, that shot up to $59.2 million. So it's not a, not a cheap feat. Next slide, please. So what goes into a successful ballot campaign? Unfortunately, good policy alone is not enough to win. And as you can see here, there are many ingredients to a successful campaign. A robust coalition and engaged grassroots effort is key, along with many other items you see here. Next slide, please. So looking to 2024, what can we expect? What do we know about the 2024 ballot and that election? Well, we can anticipate a greater voter turnout, given that it's a presidential election year. You can see here, there's anticipated 75 to 80% turnout versus what we just had, which was a 51% turnout. That also means a more expensive campaign, because we're going to try to reach more voters. As you can also see here, there are seven total initiatives that have qualified thus far for the November 2024 ballot. And there's still time for others to qualify. So it could get busier. I should also say that while these have qualified, the proponents have until June 30th, 2024 to withdraw the measure. So there could be some change up. This is the general dynamic of what we're looking at on that ballot. Next slide, please. Okay. So let's talk specifically about the California Business Roundtable Measure. First, here's a refresh on why Cal Cities opposes this measure. Approximately $2 billion of revenues each year from fees and charges would be subject to legal peril. Over $2 billion of annual revenues from dozens of tax measures that have been approved by voters between January 1st, 2022, and the effective date of this act would be subject to additional voter approval if they're not in compliance with this initiative. There would be indeterminable legal and administrative burdens and costs on local government from new and more empowered legal challenges. These would potentially create countless issues that would have to be figured out in court for years at the expense of taxpayers. Next slide, please. So let's talk a little bit about the specifics. This measure would overturn the upland decision. So taxes proposed by initiative are subject to the same rules as taxes placed on the ballot by a city council. The upland decision, as a refresher, allows special taxes proposed by initiative to require only simple majority vote approval. There would be new requirements for voter approval, for instance, when an existing tax is applied to a new territory that's annexed, or when an existing tax is applied to a new service or product, for instance, if you're applying a utility user tax to a new service or technology. Any new or increased tax must include a sunset date. If your initiative prior or as of January 1st, 2022 did not include one, you would have to take that back to the voters. We have some cities that would be potentially facing that.
If you don't mind, I'm just going to interject. So this would be measure K would be nullified if this passes, which was just passed in the last election to fund our fire services.
Yeah. Thank you. Feel free to interrupt. Voters would not be able to amend a city charter to impose, extend, or increase a tax or fee. Locally, local advisory measures would be prohibited. So if you wanted to get some feedback from your voters alongside a general tax measure, for instance, you would no longer be able to do that. Fees and charges would not be able to exceed the actual cost of providing the product or service for which the fee is charged. Actual cost would be the minimum amount necessary. This is where it gets really nuanced and kind of in the weeds and complicated. Bear with me. So examples include things like fees for planning services, excavation and encroachment permits, permit parking. There would be impacts on facility use, like rental fees for community centers, things like that, parks. This initiative would require clear and convincing evidence to prove a fee or charge is not a tax and does not exceed actual cost and is reasonable. So it really sets our agencies up for a lot of legal issues. This initiative would significantly jeopardize franchise fees. That reasonableness standard would apply there as well. It would prohibit a fee or charge or exaction regulating vehicle miles traveled from being imposed as a condition of property development or occupancy. It would also significantly jeopardize authority to impose fines and penalties. Next slide, please. Thank you. So who's behind this? The California Business Roundtable is made up of everyday businesses who have a presence in our communities across the state. This group has invested and or fundraised $50 million toward the initiative largely, which has helped it qualify. Next slide, please. So our strategy at this point, we've formed an already powerful coalition of local governments and labor to defeat this measure. Here's a preview of our strategy over the coming months. We're talking with our legislators and the governor's office about this measure. We continue to build a strong coalition, including collecting city resolutions and letters of opposition. Regarding resolutions, we had an effort last year as well, and we had more than 100 cities pass a resolution. Albany was one of those. So thank you. And thank you for your consideration yet again. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, we will take it to public comment.
Thank you presenter. Wonderful presentation. And, you know, this sounds great for the city. I'm for this also, because it allows the city to be able to keep doing what they're doing, raise taxes if we need to on certain things, to just make things easier. I have one question. Hopefully, I can get an answer. Will this help the city be able to put a tax on alcoholic beverages? I know we have a sugar sweetened beverage tax, but I'm not sure the logistics of taxing alcohol, you know, for example, beverages and more. They sell beer, wine, liquor. How do we get a special tax, you know, per ounce of beer, wine, or liquor, to go towards a general fund or a specific fund to generate money to raise awareness about, you know, the effects of alcohol, raise awareness about, you know, that alcoholism is actually a disease. You know, people can go on state disability if they drink alcohol. You know, it's alcohol, if people get cirrhosis of the liver, alcohol is another, you know, it's another plague on people's health. It's a disease, right? And so how do we, how are we going to be able to get a tax for alcohol? I know it may be tough to tax alcohol for whatever reasons. But hopefully, this, this situation with this new ballot measure will make it easier for a municipality or a local government to be able to put a tax on alcohol. Because it's just like, you know, all this alcohol is being sold without a special tax. You know, there's, there's a tax on sugar sweetened beverages and not alcohol. And I'm just wondering why. I mean, I think alcohol turns into sugar eventually, or somehow inside your body. But yeah, so the goal, the goal is to find a way to tax alcohol, use that tax to generate education on alcohol awareness, to create more citywide sober events, and things like that. So hopefully, maybe you can answer a question on how, how this measure might be able to help make it easier for us to put a tax on alcohol beverages. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any others? I think I can answer this, the question we got. This, what we're trying to do now is take an opposition to a possible constitutional amendment to the state of California that would make it nigh impossible to pass any tax measures. So nothing we're doing would make it easier to have any specific taxes, but it would keep the rules we have now to have them and, you know, make it possible. This is, this is trying to avoid an unnecessarily high bar. Am I getting that right, everybody who knows more about this?
Well, we have the expert here, or an expert here. But yes, this is all about not making taxes harder to pass rather than making them easier to pass. So it certainly would not, so the action that we would take tonight would not be facilitating making it easier. It would just be keeping it from making it harder. But please.
No, you're exactly right. And I, as far as the legalities of a special tax on alcohol, I'm not prepared to speak to that. But you're right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any comments?
Well, I guess, since this has been raised before, and you can certainly defer if you like, but I would presume that, that cities are prohibited by state law from taxing alcohol. But I don't know.
I have not looked into that.
Yeah, okay. Fair enough. That's kind of what I expected, but figured I would ask. I have nothing else. I, well, if we're done with public comment, I mean, I will say, another example of a measure that would not have passed if this was in force is 2020's Measure DD, which raised the utility user tax. So not only does it, if this initiative passed, would it prohibit advisory measures, which was called the AB strategy. It would prohibit what Albany has done. Albany hasn't done AB measures. Albany's in the sugar sweetened beverage tax measure, which was just mentioned, as well as the utility user tax increase. It embedded a voter recommendation on how the money should be spent right into the single measure, and it prohibits that approach as well. And so Measure DD, having passed with, I think, 59% voter support, it would not have been able to pass, if my understanding is correct, because it would have had to actually require that the money be spent in that particular way. And so would have needed a two thirds, two thirds majority.
Well, and additionally, you guys eked in your soda tax before there was a legislative negotiation to put a halt to those for a while. So.
Yeah, there's that, too. That was kudos to former Councilmember Mayor Pilch for getting that in under the wire. Or maybe one could say, getting it in and causing the legislature or the beverage industry to react to get that prohibited. Obviously, I'm in support of passing the resolution that's in front of us and authorizing the letter, joining the coalition. I will also offer that we're going to have some difficult choices to make if we do put any tax measures on the ballot in 2024 about whether to gamble that this thing doesn't pass, or actually put measures on the ballot that comport with it so that they can survive if it does pass. But that's a discussion for 2024.
Yes, it is. I'll offer that I'm also in support of doing this. Thank you for the presentation. California is a state with a lot of things in our constitution that I would consider stupid and existentially very damaging to the ability of government to do its basic core job, thinking of Prop 13 and Article 34. This would be another example of that sort of thing. So I'm glad we have an organized opposition already getting started. sort of thing. So I'm glad we have an organized opposition already getting started because this would make it very difficult for us to do kind of anything. So I think it's good we're discussing it. Any other comments? If not?
Yeah, you mentioned Proposition 13. It did occur to me, the asymmetry of this. It's like, okay, well, shouldn't we have a sunset on Proposition 13 so it has to be reauthorized? That would only be fair if you have to have a sunset on tax rises, then you should have to have a sunset on these tax limitations as well. Of course, the proponents would not be interested in that.
Any further discussion from council? If not, I will look for a motion.
I will move passage of Resolution 202314 and authorization of the letter that's in front of us to oppose the initiative.
And I'll second that.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That moves us on to Item 82, which is our quarterly financial review and mid-year update. I believe we will have staffs report.
Hi. I am here to take you back. It is March 20, and our quarterly report is for the second quarter, which ended December 31. So this is slightly out of, not out of date. It is accurate for what it was, but let's be transported back to December. Do I have control over this? No. Okay. Next, please. Okay, thank you. So as of December 31, we were halfway through the year, the fiscal year, and we were pretty much where we expected to be on both revenues and expenses. We have clearly, you know, tightened up our budget. We are much closer to where we budgeted for. Our revenues were at 48.5% of budget, and our expenses were at 54.8%. As in previous quarters, the revenues, we get the majority of our revenues through property taxes, and those come in two large chunks. And then we also have transfers in that are becoming larger, and those are all processed at the end of the year. So it's expected that we'll be less than 50% of budget for revenues in the middle of the year. And then expenses, we have our PERS unfunded liability payment, and our insurance payments are all due the very first month of the fiscal year. So it's, we are generally ahead for, you know, the first two quarters when you look at the percentage of the way through the budget. There are, I just called out a handful of things. The majority of what we're seeing are things that we now have seen every year, and we have a consistent report that comes to council. So it's really nothing, nothing that we, that is different than usual. Next, please. Thank you. So in addition to bringing you your quarterly review, we are bringing a mid-year budget update request. So the fiscal year 23 budget, which runs from July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2023, was passed in June of 2021. That was a little while ago. And there have been some changes since then. We are, you know, coming out of a pandemic, and the budget was passed at the height of the pandemic where there was a lot of uncertainty. So we made some pretty conservative estimates on revenues when we passed the budget. This slide in particular shows you what was originally passed at the top, and then some of the adjustments, or all of the adjustments that have been made since then. And then what we're requesting now, which is to bring our revenues up to where, you know, now that we have a couple of years and the revenues didn't go stagnant, they went, some of them went a little bit stagnant, but we didn't see the decreases that could have come. And so we want to bring the revenues up to where they appear to be coming in. And then there are just a handful of expenses that we are looking to add to bring the budget more in line with what we're, our programs and things that are, we're now doing. So the request for this, can I go to the next slide? Thank you. This is the detail of what we're requesting for the general fund. And you can see the detail of the revenue, how much we're increasing those. And then you can see with the expenses where we're asking for increases. This slide makes it clear that some of the increases are offset by revenues. A lot of the public works ones, the revenue is a transfer in from a special revenue fund. So these expenses are covered by special revenue sources. The recreation instructors, their fees are covered by the revenue that we bring in for the classes. So it's basically an offset, but we do want to increase the appropriation since, you know, everything was shut down when we passed the rec budget in '21. So this is the detail of what we are requesting for 20, for the current, for the general fund. And then in the staff report, I don't have it here because it's two lines, we are also requesting an increase in expenses in the EMS fund to increase our GEMT participation. And in joining the new, what is it called? They're revamping the program, but you have to opt into the revamp, and you get more money back at the end of the year with it, but you have to pay more. I just.
So the new program is the Public Provider Ground Emergency Medical Transport Intergovernmental Transfer Fund.
Yeah.
So the EPGMT, GEMTIGT. And what it does is increase the amount of money that we receive back from the state of California for the payments for the Medi-Cal patients that we take, both the HMO and also the fee for service. So it's a good thing. So paying in, we get those funds matched, and then they all come back to us.
I don't know why they want us to pay to get money, but I can't, I can't answer that question, so. But so those are the changes that we are requesting. These are the ones for the general fund and then the EMS fund. And that is my report. I know.
Very efficient. Are there any questions from council? Go ahead.
I don't think, but does this account for, well, it seems like there'll be an increase in utility user tax revenue over what was projected, both because gas and electricity, the rates have gone up so much, or the cost of natural gas has gone up so much, and then it was a fairly cold winter. So I don't know if that, I don't think that, I see that here, and that's fine, but I just want to.
So the amounts that were in the budget associated with UUT were estimates, and some of them have gone up. I think the, I think the gas one has. But some of them aren't coming in as high as they used to. The, for example, the telecommunications tax is lower than was anticipated. So it kind of offset and is at budget for the handful of utility user taxes that we have.
Great. Well, it's certainly a case for having a portfolio approach, and certainly would be happier to not tax people as much on communication and more on natural gas, so.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment.
Evening, everybody. Again, Jeremiah here. I just want to focus on the sugar sweetened beverage tax. I didn't see that clearly on the report, even though it is a tax. So my question is, I won't even use my three minutes. I apologize. It's just, my question is, how much is the sugar sweetened beverage tax? So if I buy a 20-ounce soda, how much am I paying in tax? Is it one cent per ounce? And the point I'm getting at is, I think we should double the tax, because that will create twice as much money. So if we make $100,000 in the tax, if we increase it, we'll make $200,000, right? If we make a half a million currently, we'll end up making a million. So my question is, how much per ounce is the current sweetened beverage tax? And is it possibly, if we can get city council organized to where we can have an agenda item to where we could increase the sugar sweetened beverage tax to double it, whatever it is? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I will throw this to staff in a second, but I think we cannot double this tax based on what we discussed earlier, because we cannot, based on the state. I don't know. And also, I will just say, if you're interested in the sugar sweetened beverage tax, we will have our mandated long discussion of it in a month or two. So that is when we will program it all and discuss how much it makes and discuss what the rate is. But I don't know if we can change it.
Council cannot. Voters have to approve taxes. With the state moratorium on sugar sweetened beverage taxes, I have no idea if we could even touch it, but the council cannot change the rate.
I don't believe we can touch it.
That is what I figured. And I think that was, answered the question. Any comments or discussion from council?
Nothing, other than that, we seem to be on the verge of actually realizing a deficit for real, unlike years past, where it wasn't realized for various reasons. When I take out the, or when I adjust for those large payments that have been made for pension and for risk management, it looks like that number comes out to about what was budgeted this time. So thank you for your work. And now it'll be our work.
Yes, this does point to future discussions about, that we have started before, but will need to have again, about our ongoing pension liability and our need for more general funding.
I was just going to say, Alan, you know, I met a little bit with the economic development side of the city and staff, and I believe that they're looking into some other options in order to help bring in more revenue in other manners as well. So that's just something rather than, I think, rather than always looking at ways of cutting different things, let's look at other opportunities to grow this so that we can, you know, take care of things in other ways without further taxing, so.
I'm happy to hear you say it. And we will come back to the discussion when we talk about what we're putting on the ballot in the election year. Any comments over here?
Yeah, I was happy to see that we're continuing our program, working with a consultant to go after grants. Raises the question. I'd love to know what grants have gotten in the past. It's not a question for tonight, but it is a question for, love to understand. And then the other question I had was just understanding that we have, with the ARPA funds that we received, I'm understanding this correctly, we have appropriated funds, but that does not necessarily mean we have spent or contracted those funds. And so I don't, I would love at some point to get an update and understanding what we have appropriated, but not actually contracted. Because we have, there's a number that I can calculate, but I don't actually know how that breaks down in terms of the general appropriation. Like, I don't need to know specific programs, but just the general programs that are listed in this document, I think, we're great to understand. But for instance, it says homelessness mitigation and housing services, $28,000, $28,000. I don't know if we've actually already spent all of that, for instance. So I would love to get an update on that. But in general, thank you for the update, and I appreciate the thought that was put into the request.
I'm assuming you don't have that number off the top of your head.
I don't need the numbers off. Just I would love, love to get that information.
Sometimes we're surprised by how much our staff does have off the top of their head.
So we are working on updating a webpage that talks specifically to that of how much have we spent in each, you know, programmed thing. I do know we have entered into a contract to spend, you know, with Berkeley Food and Housing. I don't know off the top of my head how much of that has actually gone out the door. But yeah, we, I have, I do track that. So we can definitely put that together.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for all of your responses and for putting their presentation and bringing us much closer to being not in a deficit. It's appreciated. And with that, I will look for a motion.
I will move Resolution 202315 to update the budget.
If I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can we please get a roll call?
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And moving right along to our item of public hearing, which is 91, Amendments to our Fire Prevention and Building and Housing Municipal Code. And can we please have staffs report?
Yes. Good evening, council. Jeff Bond, the Community Development Director. I was last before you with this agenda item in January. This is a little bit unique. It's due to a quirk in California law, we're holding a public hearing on the second reading. As you know, usually, we have that on the calendar, and it's rarely discussed at all. But this is, due to that, we're, this is technically a public hearing on the second reading of the amendments to the California Building Code. I gave you a brief presentation back in January, and I'll do an even brief presentation this evening. But of course, the fire chief and I are happy to answer any questions if you have them. Basically, the city is required to implement the California Building Standards Code, which is a series of binders. I think last time I brought my show and tell of half a dozen or so binders that constitute the code. That's updated every three years. We're required to adopt it. When we do that, we usually make some technical amendments, which we are continuing to do, to, first of all, make sure that we're capturing some of the technical clarifications and corrections that we come across in the course of our work, and also just to make sure that our municipal code is consistent with the requirements and the language that are in the, in the building code itself. So those technical amendments are part of this ordinance that you reviewed in January, and no changes have been made since then. And the last reminder is that the, with respect to energy efficiency measures in particular, which are, I know, are of interest to the council, the California Green Building Code was, amendments, I should say, to the California Green Building Code were approved by council in December and are being implemented in our office every day. So with that, if you have any questions for myself or for the fire chief, we'd be happy to answer. Otherwise, we appreciate you having a brief, will probably be a brief public hearing.
Hopefully. Thank you for your presentation. Any questions from council?
Seeing none, we will go to public comment.
Seeing none.
Okay, I will bring it back to council for discussion, so everyone have any comments? If there are none, feel free to go right to a motion.
I will move to waive second reading and pass ordinance 2023-01.
If I have a second?
I was going to make a comment, but that's okay.
You can go ahead.
Please, please do.
I mean, we had first reading, and so we had this conversation, but I would like to highlight just in, in having passed our housing element, our housing, we talked a lot about zoning changes, allowing more housing, exploration of more housing. I would love for us as a community to have a discussion about potential building code and fire code amendments in the future that specifically relate to smaller and fire code amendments in the future that specifically relate to, um, smaller apartment buildings. In reference, the city of Memphis, I believe about midway through last year, passed regulations that made, um, buildings under six units be able to be built under the international, um, I'm gonna get really geeky here. So international residential code as opposed to the international building code. Uh, they also made amendments to their fire code to allow, uh, essentially the type of fire systems that we require in single-family houses in Albany to be used for these smaller buildings. All in an attempt to, in the city of Memphis, make these buildings more financially feasible. And so knowing that we are passing fire code issues today, I just want to raise the issue that as we move forward with the housing element implementation, I would like us to also continue to look at ways that our fire code and building code could be improved.
Very, a point, very well taken. I would much support.
And with that, I'll second the motion.
Amazing. It's been moved and seconded. Could we please have a roll call?
Um, Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hansa Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move on to unfinished business, uh, starting with 10-1, which is our local roadway safety plan. Can we please have staffs report?
Good evening, council. Justin Fried, Transportation and Sustainability Manager for the city. I'm here with my colleague, Michelle Plouse, who have been staffing this project. And I'll briefly introduce this item and then hand it over to our consultants that have been developing the plan. Before you tonight is the local roadway safety plan presented for your approval. The transportation commission has been working with the consultants on the development and preparation and review of this plan for, for the last year. The city objectives for this planning effort include identifying safety priorities, updating the existing conditions and collision analysis found in our active transportation plan and maintaining our funding eligibility and competitiveness for, for safety grants. This plan will inform our updates, um, inform updates we're making to other plans, including upcoming updates to the active transportation plan. It'll inform various city programs related to roadway safety and it will, uh, inform our project selection and design for future capital roadway projects. And with that, I will hand it over to Ruda and Mark from TJKM, the, to present the plan and some of the key analysis found in the plan.
Hey, Justin. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for your time this evening. There are a couple of things that, uh, were talked about today. And, um, I'm, I'm glad to know that lighting is one of the issues and that was also one of the concerns that we heard from the community. So would like to go through that. Sorry, because it's a PDF, it doesn't move up a page. But, um, just quickly going through today's agenda, what is local road safety plan? What took place in the process? So what are the different steps that we went through before we came up with the safety projects that we are going to propose today? Community engagement and comments. Community was engaged at the onset of the project and a lot of comments were received and we have tried to incorporate them as much as possible. Collision analysis and findings, um, which led us into high injury network, which were, uh, ten intersections and, uh, eight roadway segments, which also led us into safety projects that we will be talking about and then opening up to questions. This local roadway safety plan, um, the overarching goal of local roadway safety plan is to reduce fatalities and severe injuries on city roadways and intersections that, um, attribute to collisions. The way we do it is we identify them, we analyze it, we prioritize the roadway intersections as well as, uh, segments for improvements and then bring it to you for, with some proposed, uh, improvements. And this document is also really important because it does give you eligibility for EdSIP grant funding, which is called Highway Safety Improvement Program. Not only EdSIP, but it's, it's also, uh, important for other grants like SS4A and OABAG now. So it, it is kind of a document that is needed to apply for those grants. And it does consider, um, engineering as well as non-engineering strategies. The four main E or components of this program is education enforcement, engineering and emergency medical services. And we feel that if all these four components come together, we can get a robust plan. As a part of LRSP process, uh, first of all, uh, LRSP is guided by Caltrans and they do allow us to consider collision data, um, and evaluate it for five years. So the five years data that we had considered was 2016 through 2020. At that time, 2021, 2022 data was provisional, so we were not able to use that data. And, um, uh, we, like, the other state highways like AT and 5AT were excluded, but we did include San Pablo Avenue. Collision analysis, um, it helped us to identify collision trends, different types of collision, severity, violation categories, um, which I will be speaking into a little bit of more in-depth in the next slides. Also, it did include a GIS identification of the, uh, top trends. After that, we identified the high injury network, which included intersections and roadway segments. We also identified emphasis areas, which are the areas we really need to focus on and what were the factors that led to collisions. We identified the viable countermeasures and developed a countermeasure toolbox, which helped us to develop the safety projects for those high-risk locations. And actually, it was not only for those high-risk locations, but also we tried to include other locations that did not have collisions to kind of make it more of a systemic, um, safety analysis, more, uh, proactive than reactive. One of the main components that, uh, or the task that was included in this plan was community engagement. And as I mentioned before, um, community was engaged at the onset of the project. We did have a project webpage. We also created a map input with pandemic and, um, people not coming to in-person meetings. We thought that, um, this would be a best way to reach out to them. So we created a map and, uh, community members could either point at an intersection or a roadway segment and let us know exactly where their, um, locations of concerns were. And all those were incorporated in our study. As you can see, we did receive 579 responses from city. The website and the webpage, as well as the map input platform, was promoted on city website, social media and monthly, uh, e-newsletters. A lot of comments and concerns were related to visibility and speeding. Some more analysis onto community comments. As you can see, um, and as I mentioned before, that a lot of comments were related to visibility and lighting, speeding, pedestrian safety, bicycle safety. The major, um, corridors that were brought up over and over again in community comments were Solano, Marine and San Pablo Avenue. Twenty-one percent of the comments were with respect to visibility and lighting and curves. And eighteen percent of the comments were concerned about, uh, sorry, that we receive were about speeding. Twenty-nine percent of commuters were concerned about bicycle safety at an intersection as well as bicycle, bicycle safety itself. Twenty-six percent of residents were concerned about bicycle and pedestrian safety on corridors like Solano Avenue, Marine Avenue and San Pablo Avenue. Collision analysis findings, um, we did, uh, find that there were 478 collisions between 2016 to 2020. Sixteen were fatal and severe injury, out of which one was fatality, which is kind of point two percent of the total collisions in those five years. And as you can see, um, definitely city is doing a lot of improvements and we are seeing that in the, in the trends. As you can see, that the, the collisions are actually declining. So we should, we should kind of keep on doing what we're doing to see this, um, decline in collisions. Some more analysis, uh, collision type. The type of collisions that we analyzed, most of them were roadside collisions and red and collisions. We also saw that vehicle collisions, vehicle to vehicle collisions were the highest, fifty-one percent, followed by pedestrian and bicycle collisions. And then in violation category, the collisions have occurred due to improper turning, automobile right-of-way and unsafe speed. We also did focus pedestrian and bicycle collision analysis. And, um, uh, we saw that fifty-one percent of pedestrian collisions were caused due to pedestrian right-of-way violation, as well as twenty-one percent was due to pedestrian violation itself. Sixty-seven percent of pedestrian collisions occurred in a crosswalk at an intersection. Looking at the bicycle collisions, eighteen percent of bicycle collisions were caused due to automobile right-of-way violation. Sixty-one percent occurred where party at fault was proceeding straight vehicle. And all, uh, all these collisions occurred within the two fifty feet of an intersection. And then there were also twenty-six percent of pedestrian collisions that, um, twenty-six percent of pedestrian and twenty-one percent of bicycle collisions that occurred at nighttime. This analysis actually is in line with the concerns that we heard from the community too. So it kind of validates the community concerns. The next slide is just kind of showing the figures, where, a figure, uh, for bicycle collision and pedestrian collisions as to, uh, where, which intersections that they occurred at or what were the roadway segments we did see, um, pedestrian bicycle type of collisions. Once the analysis was completed, we did work on high injury network. And, uh, as a part of that, we have identified ten high injury intersections. As you can see, um, almost, uh, six, six out of ten intersections are on, um, San Pablo, a couple of them on Solano, Marine and then Buchanan. We also identified high injury corridors. We identified seven high injury corridors. Solano Avenue and San Pablo Avenue, uh, were ranked among the top two. By Buchanan and Santa Fe. Then we, when we compare that with bicycle and pedestrian high injury network, at an, for intersection, we had an additional intersection, Marine Street at Santa Fe Avenue, that was added to the list. And when we look at the roadway segments, Solano Avenue between Ramona Avenue to Peralta Avenue was also added due to high, uh, numbers on pedestrian bicycle, um, injuries within that area. And then based on that, we identified nine safety projects. Project one and two were related to signalized intersections and improvements, either in signal timing or pedestrian bicycle type of improvements. Project three and four were at unsignaled intersections where we have proposed, um, upgrading some signs or even having, uh, RRFBs. And then if, when you look at project five, six and seven, they are more of a proactive approach where we are, uh, proposing that, uh, we should look for funds to do citywide signal upgrade, citywide streetlight inventory, which was just spoken about early on in this meeting. Yes, that, there, there is an issue and we do have, um, uh, grants available for, uh, looking for funds for streetlight inventory. And then also we are proposing that all the signalized intersections be looked at and wherever needed, we do, um, install leading pedestrian intervals. And then project eight and nine are at roadway segments. Project eight is more for vehicular improvements and project nine is improvements for pedestrian and bicycle safety. And the details of all these projects are, is in the report that is submitted. Some non-engineering strategies that we think that we should look into is education. Probably create some, uh, public information education camps. Also, uh, have some pedestrian bicycle safety campaigns and outreach to them. Implement tactical urbanism, um, to, to kind of, you know, first have a feel of what does community think about certain type of different measures that we could implement. And once they, they kind of like it, or if, if it works for the city and the community, then you can go ahead and make it more permanent. Enforcement at some targeted locations would definitely be helpful. Installing emergency vehicle preemption system, um, could also help, uh, reduce some of the collisions. Next is implementation strategy. Local road safety plan is not a plan that is once done and, um, you know, all, all taken care of and done. It is a living document and Caltrans does propose that you do update this document every three to five years, depending on what are your experiences with the, uh, implementation strategies. So once those strategies are implemented, um, we should monitor these high-risk locations where these strategies are implemented, analyze, um, and have some performance measures to see whether they have worked for us or do we need to fine-tune them a little bit? Evaluate the total number of collisions to see whether we are seeing, um, decline in collisions. If those measures work for us, then we continue implementing more strategies. If not, then we should fine-tune it and, um, implement some new strategies to see what, what works for us. And as I said, um, we should update our LRSP report every two to five years. And with that, I would like to open up for discussion and Q and A.
Thank you for that presentation. Uh, are there any questions from council?
I have one. So I know, like, many years ago, um, it was just, I, while I was living on Key Route, it was, uh, neighbor took around a petition to get a speed home at two parts of the block. After it was all said and done, it was approved and still to this day, it's never been installed. So I'm kind of curious to see, because that was also something that I learned about throughout my campaign, is that there were several other situations where something like that had occurred. So I was wondering if any of that had been taken into account, whereas the, some of the areas that had already been identified and approved to have an installation and had, hasn't been yet done.
Justin, do you want me to take that first or you want to go first?
Existing plans and existing projects that we have on the books were shared with the consultants and part of what they looked at in preparing the plan.
Also, uh, local road safety plan is very focused on, uh, major arterials and collectors. It, it's just the nature of the program. Caltrans countermeasure toolbox has lot of countermeasures that are more related or geared towards arterials and, um, collector streets. When we come to local streets, that's where the neighborhood traffic calming plan comes into picture. So when you talk about speed homes and those kind of improvements, they, they are not part of the countermeasures within the local road safety plan. But what should happen is local road safety plan, along with your neighborhood traffic calming plan, when they come together, then both the local streets, the residential streets, as well as the arterials and collectors, everything kind of, you know, gets, gets looked at.
Okay, and I noticed that, you know, sometimes when we slow or calm traffic in other in certain areas, then other areas become more heavily used. And obviously, you know, the two of the main streets that you're talking about were many more of the incidents that happened were are the higher traffic area, are the shopping districts per se. So you're you're getting a lot more traffic, as you're saying, in in those areas. But I've noticed that, like, it's just a kind of combination of pitfalls, which I'm glad to see are being, you know, brought to attention here. It's like the combination of poor lighting, overgrown trees, signs that are non-reflective even, stop signs that are missing, crosswalks that might need to be repainted. There's just a variety of these things that all have been needing to be taken care of. And and so I'm glad to see this.
And you hit the right point, because, you know, when when we do propose neighborhood traffic calming measures, it it does impact residential, other neighborhood residential streets, because as you know, traffic does penetrate into it. And those need a little bit more careful study and to be looked at before we go ahead and and install that. It also needs community engagement and buy-off from the community, because one resident might be okay with a speed home, but the other might not be. So that that those those kind of improvements are a little different from what are included in LRSB. But yes, they they all should be looked at together.
And I really like the fact that the education piece was in there, because I think that that is something in human nature we've been lacking a lot of, you know, kind of using our common sense in some respects of things. I'll just go back to my grandmother was was Albany's first adult crossing guard. And man, she was she was on people as far as educating them, making sure that they stayed and waited until she was the one who stopped traffic to allow them to come across the street and making, you know, cyclists get off of their bicycles and walk them through the crosswalk rather than just entering the intersection unsafely.
Other questions?
Yeah, thank you for the work and the presentation. I know it's been a long road, so to speak. It's been in process for quite a while. This is a kind of a detailed question, but it will help me understand the document more fully than just the the question itself would indicate. So there are countermeasures proposed for the roadway of Madison or a segment of roadway on Madison. It's from 400 feet north of Washington and 450 east south of Solano. The estimated cost of those countermeasures is $1.59 million. However, I I think I'm only seeing that there are two countermeasures actually proposed, and this gets to my question, maybe I'm not seeing this correctly. And one is to install edge lines and center lines, and the other one is to install a rectangular wrapped flashing beacon, I presume at the intersection with Solano. I presume there's something more than that here, because those two together would not come anywhere near 1.59 million. They'd be something more like an order of magnitude less than that, if not two orders of magnitude less than that. So I don't know, I, you know, I've searched through this, this section, list of safety projects to see if there's other countermeasures for that red segment on Madison, and I'm I'm not seeing anything, so I'm a little confused. So it shows up on page 86 is the center and edge striping and.
So Madison has six, actually only one countermeasure? Okay, so when we when we put the projects together, it's not only for one location. Project number eight is for six locations, and that includes various different countermeasures. So the the total that you're seeing is for all those six locations for various countermeasures.
Okay, I'm I'm confused. So there are six locations. The total of all six locations is $16.1 million. The line for Madison specifically is $1.59 million. So I think the one, I mean, I'm looking at the table, looks like 1.59 is specific to Madison, and the countermeasure on that project is R28, which is edge and center lines. And then project number nine has a row for for Madison as well, and that also has 1.59 million. So I presume I presume all the countermeasures, no matter which project they're in, that apply to a particular location, either intersection or red segment, are all summed up in that number. It's on 1.59 million for each of the countermeasures. But even still, putting those two countermeasures together, from my knowledge of the expensive striping and rectangular wrapped flashing beacons would be, as I say, order and a half magnitude less than that, two orders of magnitude less than that.
Has gone up significantly, but I will definitely look into it and get back to you. Page number 86. Yes, you, that that is correct. Do you have a detailed cost estimate in the appendix? So I but I will definitely check and get back to you on that.
Okay, yeah, and I'll go there while others are asking, commenting. I think that's Appendix D if I, if I have that right. Thanks.
Mark, do you have the detail sheet on you?
I'm looking it up right now.
Looks like the details are on page 175.
Should be an Excel spreadsheet for. It has installation of median barrier, which is going to cost quite a bit. It also has installation of edge line rumble strips, and it has installation of center line. So I think that that major cost is coming from the median barrier.
Oh, me, okay. And so that, the median barrier, okay, so I see that in Appendix D now, but I guess that doesn't appear further up. Anyway, I'll I'll look at it further. Median barrier on a local residential street, okay? That does not make, yeah. So I guess that leads to my other question. What what is the, what is ultimately the the import for the city of adopting this plan? I mean, if we adopt this plan, then are we bound to essentially somebody coming to the city and saying, well, you said you're going to put a median barrier on Madison Avenue, therefore you have to put a median barrier on Madison Avenue?
No, these are just recommendations. It does not mean that you have to implement them.
Okay. Is that, I'm curious to hear from, from our transportation planner.
Yes, that's correct. So it looks at various countermeasures within the toolbox for local roadway safety plans, planning manual. It isn't binding us to doing any particular strategies. It's providing a look at the cost benefit analysis of a menu of strategies for these different roadway types. But anything that we, any of these that are priority areas that are identified here, we would look in greater detail before we would pursue design.
Okay, thank you. Would we, and and we've talked about this before, but I'll ask it here. So my understanding was that Caltrans only allows analysis of five years of data, or requires analysis of five years, no more, no less?
That is correct.
Okay. And so that has given us a set of priority locations. What if we analyze 10 years of data and we find there are some other location that is actually a higher risk?
Yeah, our intention is to build on this analysis. We know there's other things that we're interested in looking at before we establish the priorities for projects. So the Transportation Commission recommended approval of this, but with the caveat that before we actually prioritize projects that we look at, our other other data sources, other information we have before we.
I presume, but perhaps incorrectly, are there certain grant sources that we would only be able to apply to fund countermeasures that are either recommended this or in the locations that are in this this plan?
My understanding is that the federal HCP program, that really is what prescribes this process, it needs to be in here. It's start starting to be added as you need to have this plan for some other regional funding sources in terms of scoring. So I think having a location in here and it's a collision analysis showing that this should be a priority helps with competitiveness. I don't think we're going to be bound to specific measures in here. I think anything that we bring to inform what our design recommendation is for a particular intersection or roadway segment would be taken into account for funds.
Okay, well, that, yeah, I'll come back to that in deliberation. That's useful information. Thank you.
Any further questions from council?
I'm just going to throw in there, because you were talking about the prior data, as well as, I assume we'd be looking at the current trends as well, just the landscape that's changed along Solano Avenue, as well as different modes of transportation as well now. So that'll also take into effect the overall.
One reason they like looking at a shorter time period that's more recent is we have been making improvements, we have projects, so wanting to reflect the changes that you've made and to see if there's differences. But the for a reference point, the active transportation plan looked at a 10-year range. So we have had other planning efforts that look at a different horizon.
Have you also, like, comparative wise, the two, like, were there, based upon, like, the current findings and everything, were there, was there research and stuff done, you know, whatever, however many years ago? And comparative, the two, like, what has what has made a positive impact versus what has caused more negative results? Have you compared the two?
This focused on those five years, but additional planning efforts, we could look at a longer horizon and see see differences over a longer time.
I always just like to see, like, if we're if we're changing something, does it help or does it hurt? So that's what I'm getting at.
So I I could kind of take that question a little bit from our experience in different cities. So in city of Cupertino, we are, we did complete LRSB, as well as in city of Livermore, and now we are helping them with Vision Zero. And Vision Zero allows you to take 10 years' worth of data, but it just focuses, it doesn't focus on all different type of collisions, it just focuses on fatality as well as severe injury type of collisions. And what we have seen is the trend pretty much remains the same. So the emphasis areas, the reason behind these collisions, they they come out within the same range. There is there has hardly been that there are outliers significantly different from what we have seen in five years versus 10 years. But that's that's my experience from other cities.
Any further questions from council? If not, we will go to public comment.
Thank you, Ann. This is Jeremiah here. A couple of things I want to touch basis on. Regarding the map for Albany of collisions, hey, Justin, questions for you. I I attended the transportation meeting. What was the name of the local maps for Berkeley? Was it Bob's Maps? Was it Bob? I forget. But maybe after my public comment, you could let council know and the public know. There is kind of a local collision map that does get updated, I guess, what, every maximum of three years? But I was I was thinking that, you know how we're doing the tree inventory and the tree map? I was hoping that maybe Albany, city of Albany, we can get a our own updated map. That doesn't take three years to get a collision updated. You know, if it's recorded by the police department, it it goes up on the website, you know, that day or that week, once an incident, once a collision is reported in Albany, the the city's collision map on the city's website would just be updated, and that would just be there for forever. You know, we can look back 10 years later, oh, there was a collision back in 2001, or, you know. So, yeah, so what was the name of that map? Bob's Maps? I forget what the name of it. But then the second thing I want to touch basis on is I noticed there were a lot of dots around schools. I think I counted six or seven dots. Cornell and Solano, there were a lot of dots, Cornell and Solano, and also around the high school on the northeastern side by the dog park. You know, as Councilmember Jennifer explained, how important it is for for safety around schools, that's why we have crossing guard, was it, a crossing guard, to help children cross the streets. I was wondering, in this road safety, road safety plan, I I noticed you said there was a lot of speeding, a lot of community members were talking about speeding. I'm wondering if there's anything regarding slower speeds around schools or implementing school zones in our municipal codebook? So, yeah, basically, is there, are there any plans? Does this city have any plans on reducing the speed limit around schools? Right now, it's 25 miles an hour. You know, cars don't just go 25, they go 30. And that's just way too fast for loading and unloading times during school hours. So what what is the city's plans regarding slower speed limits around our schools, considering there's many incidents? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We had a question on type of maps, and then if this includes anything about school zones.
I think the maps he was, the speaker was referring to is called the TIMS, the Traffic Injury, I don't know the acronym anymore, mapping system that UC Berkeley provides, which pulls statewide injury mapping, pulls statewide injury reports that police departments report to the state and maps them. So it is publicly accessible. It is, does have a delay, because those reports get are provisional for a while before they're finalized, before police departments actually have to get all and close out reports and do the investigation and everything. So there will always be a lag to those. But that is something that we report out at the Transportation Commission annually as as a New Year's reports come in.
And then is there anything about school-specific speed in here?
The, I mean, there, schools were one of the factors that was was looked at, both in comments and that we received, and in terms of locations analysis. The the analysis is really about collisions for the most part, but there were definitely roadway segments and intersections that were in proximity to schools that were part of what was identified.
Thank you. And I'll just say, on the school point, I myself, looking at this map, was kind of surprised how little these tended to cluster around schools, which I think probably points to the success of our crossing guard program. Having lived across from one of our schools for a long time, it's very chaotic around there, but I think it's gotten better. And I think this, the map really shows that it's around the big thoroughfares, not around schools specifically, which I think is a very interesting and good data point to have. Any discussion from council?
I just want to bring up that, you know, the on our, on the city website, the police department has a section on there that if anything's reported through there, it should be on their blotter, I guess, is what we used to call it. I don't know if it's called that anymore. But but you can see what, and I, from my. But you can see what, and I, from my understanding, per the chief, that's updated pretty much every day, if not every other day, depending on if it's a weekend or not. So just to, so we could keep track of it ourselves if.
Thanks. I will make more of a habit of looking at that, looking for that. Are there good news when nothing's there and, or bad news when something's there? Bad news nonetheless. My question earlier about the time window that could be used for data collection, or the time window across which data would be analyzed, goes to, I think there's a lot of statistical not significance in this, because if you look at the collision map and you look at the weightings, so the severe injury collisions have a very high weighting, it's like an order of magnitude or two orders of magnitude higher than the next injury category, which I'm not seeing as inappropriate. But if you look at the street segments and you look at the intersections that are selected as high injury, they basically have one injury over five years. And Madison is showing up because there happened to be a severe injury mid-block on Madison. I don't know, certainly in my experience, Madison's not a particularly dangerous street. It's not a particularly high-traffic street. It's a local residential street. Maybe there is something quite unique there that caused that collision, but I suspect it's just random occurrence, and yet it's driving the result. And I would say the same thing about Solano. So we see that there's only one segment of Solano that is indicated as high injury. It has, if I'm not mistaken, it has one severe injury, and that is what is causing that segment to be in the high-injury network. But again, I don't think that's the only part of Solano that has the same level of risk. I mean, I think probably between San Pablo and Masonic is probably fairly uniform, but then east of Masonic to the city limits, I would say, is another segment. And the segment that's chosen is really a subsegment of that segment, and I question the statistical veracity of that. So I'm quite perturbed to hear, and I appreciate your informing me, that presence of a location in this plan is, there's momentum, if it's not already happened, to make the presence of a location in this plan a grand application metric. Because if it's garbage in, then it's garbage out. And so this suggests it's something I need to take up as a Albany, as Alameda County Transportation Commissioner, at least to make that body aware that a lot of this is not statistically defensible. So, but it is, it is what's required, so I appreciate the work was done. I'd be interested if the consultant has any comments on what I just laid out, either agreement or disagreement. Either way, I welcome it all. I'm a scientist, so.
Kind of agreement and disagreement. So Caltrans does, agreement in a way that, you're right, that we are looking at locations that have higher fatality and severe injuries, but we need to start somewhere. We need to know the trends. So that's the reason why these collisions are looked at and analyzed, because these collisions also give you common trends within the city. What this does is, and you're absolutely right, the formula that we have to follow based on Caltrans guidance is giving a lot of weightage. That's 165 points based on, you know, one life taken, converted to dollars. It gives that much of weightage to fatal and severe injury collisions, but when you look at visible injury collisions, it just gives you like 11 points. Complaint of pains is just six points, and property damage is just one point. The problem with the data set is that it does have a good data set for type of injuries, but it does not have a lot of good data set for property damage-only type of collisions. So what we do by analyzing is, as I said before, that we are kind of looking at the overall trend. So you can start somewhere. We need to know exactly what could be done to rectify some of these possible collisions. And that's where the safe system approach and other Vision Zero approach and all that kicks in, is, you know, consider that even one person makes that mistake, it does cost a life to someone, and that's kind of significant. And if we can, if we can avoid that, then we should do all possibilities to avoid that. Now, that particular incident might have happened at one location. It doesn't mean that it would not repeat at other locations. So that's why we try to combine the reactiveness with proactiveness and try to create these other projects that use, that we have identified, which are more like citywide projects, which we were also talking about from lighting perspective, that, yes, overall, we felt that the lighting within the city is less, and not only certain locations should be improved, but the entire city should be looked at from lighting perspective. Similarly, we also identified that signals, there are some signal improvements that should be done throughout the city to avoid any of those collisions that could happen, which have not happened so far. So kind of a little bit of agreement but disagreement, too.
Yeah, thanks very much. I appreciate that. And, yeah, certainly on the citywide projects. But I guess you need to ask, under these granting metrics, grant award metrics that either exist and/or coming, depending upon the source, are they going to look at the location map? Or are they going to say, well, you have a citywide project in here, you're applying for funding for a part, for some, you know, for a suite of locations that includes locations that are high injury and ones that are not? Is that grant going to get downscored, then?
So that's where we need to kind of, you know, play it out well. Like, when we put the application together, we try to merge those locations where we see collisions with locations that have similar kind of characteristics, and make sure that our benefit-cost ratio is high enough so that your application is attractive and it does get funded. So that's where some of these engineering judgments have to be, you know, played off to still keep your B/C ratio high. So, and we kind of did that in last cycle. We helped 52, we helped with 52 applications, and we were able to get $52 million for our clients. But again, you have to be, you have to play a game right there to put your application together, that it is still showing higher B/C ratio, but you get other locations also included. And that's why most of the places, we try to do citywide projects where locations that have collisions and locations that do not have collisions, they all get combined together and give you a valuable project, rather than location-specific projects.
Oh, great. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think that, you know, I wonder if the methodology was really platformed on a larger city, where you probably have locations where you have, you know, three, four, five severe injuries, so you don't just have a binary of yes or no. And in that case, you would approach statistically significance, but as I say, in a small city like Albany, and maybe one that's doing reasonably well on safety compared to some other cities, you're down to zero or one. And so in some sense, it puts me in mind, there might need to be some research on what does Vision Zero do towards the end, when you're just getting these random, you know, random collisions across the network, and you're chasing, you start chasing your tail. But I guess, you know, that approach of looking for all similar locations across the city where an incident happens, rather than saying, okay, well, we're going to focus on this one location, is the way, sounds like the way to go. So thank you for the dialogue. I very much appreciate it.
Yeah, you have to be proactive. You can't just treat those locations reactively and just, you know, hang on to those. You have to look for other locations where there are similar characteristics but no collisions and combine them.
Great. Thank you.
I'll just add, at the regional level, I think the push is to make sure folks have these plans so that they were eligible and competitive for state, federal safety dollars. But at least at the local, regional level, a lot of them are saying this plan or a Vision Zero plan or equivalent. So I think, at least in terms of more regional funding or county funding, if we needed to do different kinds of analysis that was still focused on collision data and systemic, I think we would still be able to compete.
Okay. But just to clarify, to your knowledge, it's only the federal granting that follows, you know, that looks at this plan, and do you have this location in your plan currently? And maybe it's coming to other granting agencies, but it's really the federal that has that kind of hardcore perspective at this point?
Ruda can probably speak to it better, but my understanding is there's this methodology, and then there's the H-SIP funding source that has a lot of this baked into how they evaluate grants in that program.
And it's the only one at this point that you're aware of? So it's more maybe a trend in that direction, but we haven't gotten there yet, or other? Okay.
H-SIP is one of them, which is very, very focused on B/C ratio. And that's why, you know, having these locations with higher fatality rates included is very important. But SS4A and OBAG are not just focused on collision-related locations. So their different grants have different mechanism, and this mechanism is only for H-SIP as of now. We don't know if it changes.
Great. Thank you.
Other comments from council?
So I really appreciate this work. I think it's really great. I think it's going to feed well into ATP, right? I also hope that, given that this is on a five-year cycle, that this means that we can at least look at the ATP every five years, maybe not having to do a complete rewrite, but at least every five years, having, raising the question of, are there items that should be changed based on data that's collected for these kinds of efforts or other efforts? I would also note, ACTC is having conversation with Albany about the streets around San Pablo. Am I remembering this correctly, Preston? And so that plays into both the study that was found here or the data that was analyzed. I think the biggest thing that I have concern with here is, nothing to do with the report, right? The reality is, we as a community have few fatalities, few severe injuries, which is a good thing, right, for us as a community, but it also puts us at a disadvantage of getting funds, right? We're not a community where there is one intersection where there's five deaths, a death a year, right? And so I raise this because something, Councilmember Hanson Romero, you brought up earlier about speed bumps. We're also a community that has a plan for putting traffic safety in, but we don't have funding for that. And so continually, we are going to find, I believe, as a community, that we are going to need to find ways of funding these repairs, whether it's through ATP, talking about more about active transportation, or whether it's about the safety that's coming from this plan, or whether it's the speeding from the traffic controls that we, traffic calming measures that we would like. And if nothing, this conversation is actually hiding the real importance for us as a council to think creatively about how we're going to solve this, because it's not going to come from grants. Like, if we're expecting that miracle grants are going to land in our pockets to get this work done, I think, I think we're doing a disservice to the community. I worked on the Active Transportation Plan that was passed in 2012, 2013. You know, we're just getting around to influencing some of the things from the revised plan that was, I think, revised in 2014, or I don't remember when it was last revised. And so this mechanism of how do we fund these improvements, I think, is going to be on us and eventually on the community to make some decisions about, because we can't sit around waiting for money to show up to fix these issues. So that's what I really wanted to comment here on, so.
Yeah, and I would add as a, and, well, I would say, one, it's appropriate that we don't get that grant funding, because if you have other cities that have far more injuries than fatalities, then, yeah, they should get those funds. And maybe that's actually a question for the consultant. So the B/C ratio that we see in this, how does our highest number compare with the highest number, or even the median number from some of the other cities that you've worked on, like Cupertino, for instance?
Some of these project numbers are pretty high, so your chances of getting funds are pretty good. Last time, any B/C ratio over 17 made the list. So, yeah, so we are good, except for some projects that are in the range of four and eight. Probably those are the projects that would not get funded, but there are quite a few projects that are pretty high up there, and there are good chances of getting those funds.
Okay. Good to know. Thanks very much.
Any other comments from council? If not, I'll look for a motion.
I would move it, but I don't, my computer's asleep.
2023-16.
I will move Resolution 2023-16 with thanks to staff and the consultant.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, may please have a roll call.
Councilmember, Councilmember Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
And Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And thank you to staff and consultant for the presentation and all the work that went into it.
You so much. Have a great evening.
That brings us to Item 10-2, which is a move to change the Social and Economic Justice Commission to the Racial Inclusivity and Social Equity Commission. And do we have staff's report? Or is this just a very short report, because we've already talked about it a fair amount?
Yes, indeed. Perhaps it is. This is a follow-up to direction given by the council at your last meet, or two meetings ago. We wanted to make sure we had all five of you here to potentially take this action and provide direction back to staff if necessary. This follows up on the recommendations from the subcommittee comprised of Councilmember Hanson Romero and Lopez, who provided the insight and recommendations regarding a transition of your current Social and Economic Justice Commission to the new Racial Inclusivity and Social Equity Commission, RISE. Attached to the staff report, you have a resolution proposed. It walks through the suggested charge for this commission, as well as the appointees in terms of the composition of the group. A total of seven members, one appointed by each council member, standard to your typical advisory bodies, one student appointment, a high school student of a high school within the City of Albany, and one appointment, which would either be a high school student or an adult affiliated with students at the high school level in the City of Albany. Those two remaining appointments are council as a whole appointments. This is taking into consideration your next agenda item, so hopefully we can, we can transition as effectively as possible with that. But we thought it important to include that principle, given the conversations that the councils had thus far on the student representation and your priority in ensuring youth engagement in local government. A couple of notes, as indicated in the staff report and as noted by the mayor previously this evening, we currently have three individuals appointed by individual council members to SEJC. We would envision that those three members would simply transition into RISE, no formal procedure necessary besides acknowledgement of the council, and of course, the acceptance of that transition by the three individuals. And pending council direction, our first work item with the commission would be to develop that work plan. Noted that the intention was that it be fairly succinct and focused, at least on the onset, to help ensure effectiveness of this new group. So we are happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. I'll start it off with one question that has been sort of, because it was brought up earlier tonight, slash, because I talked about it with the city manager in our check-in today. Would it be helpful and timely if we included in this to, in addition for that first work plan item, to plan item, to be drafting the work plan for the RISE to consider the sugar, sweetened beverage tax, as SEJC is supposed to do that? And we will be doing that soon, so we need them to do it somewhat quickly, once they start meeting as RISE?
Yes. We tentatively have the study session for sugar, sweetened beverage tax for your second meeting in April. So ideally, RISE would have an initial agenda item to provide recommendations on that. I think that it's highly doable, knowing that some of the individuals that have been appointed have served on SEJC in the past, and also the engagement from the community at large.
Okay. So that's doable as we have it now?
As long as we get a quorum for that first meeting, which, right now, we would need at least one more member appointed.
Okay. Good to know. Any questions from council?
One question is motivated by what you raised, which is, I cannot recall if the sugar, sweetened beverage tax ordinance specifies the SEJC. And if it does, do we need a line in this resolution saying, for the purposes of that ordinance, RISE will function as the SEJC? And I don't necessarily expect an answer immediately, but maybe you look at that while we're...
It does. It does specifically say the three advisory bodies.
That is crazy unfortunate.
As written at the time.
Yeah, yeah. So it kind of reminds me of the situation where the Transportation Commission acts as the B-PAC for the purposes of such and such. So I think we need to amend the resolution with something like that.
Good thinking. I was hoping we could avoid that, but you're probably right. All right, we will wait if the city attorney has anything more specific, or if we should just add that language when we move this.
If you want to take a public comment, Mayor, we can confirm that in the meeting.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment.
Jeremiah, I hear a couple of questions. So what's the mission statement going to be for this commission? I know each commission has their own mission statement, so I was wondering if city council is supposed to draft that, or who actually comes up with the mission statement? Is that the city manager? Is that AM? Is that the new commission, RISE itself? They come up with their own mission statement? I was just wondering about the mission statement. And also, once you approve this tonight, I guess this is the second reading, so then it's official, when is the city's website going to be updated? So that way, let's say tomorrow, if someone wants to apply for this commission, is it still going to say you're applying for SEJC? Or is the city's website going to be organized to translate, now you're applying for the RISE commission? I was wondering, how long is it going to take for the city's website to be updated, you know, once this is approved tonight? So that's my question there. And also regarding this, I'll put it out there that the, I guess it's this agenda item or the next agenda item, I just don't know where to say this, but the school board hasn't received, I sent an email to Superintendent Wells, and he hasn't received any notices that I actually applied for the SEJC. I applied once in January and once in February. So I'm wondering, why is the information that I applied for this commission being withheld, and the school board hasn't received any sort of notifications on my application? We're just wondering what's going on there. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any more? Okay. For those questions, the school board one, we will, I think, take up in the next agenda item, so if we don't answer in the presentation there, we'll come back to it. I imagine the city site will be updated as soon as we can. That will be the goal. Thank you, Ann.
For the official adoption before...
Yes, once it's officially adopted. And the mission statement, I believe that was part of our last consideration of it in the resolution, if I'm getting that correct, on line five of page two, where it says that the RISE commission will be tasked with advising the city council on the citywide priorities of equity, diversity, accountability, and inclusivity to address the broad spectrum of intersectional issues across race and social equity within the city of Albany. The RISE commission shall also seek to develop positive relations through the commission's regular monthly meetings as a space to facilitate greater respect and understanding between people, offering opportunities for cultural exchange and education, and promote tolerance and mutual respect between all members of the community. With that, we'll bring it back for council discussion. Anyone have any things they'd like to note?
Go for it. Thanks. I noted that the seat that could be filled by an adult who is affiliated with schools is specific to affiliated with high school or high school students. And I'm wondering if, well, I don't think that was the council's intent in considering the other bodies. That may be appropriate for this body, but I just want to highlight, I think that's a variance with what we've considered of the other bodies. I don't think we've considered one way or the other. We haven't gotten to that level of specificity. Something that'd be useful for the council to talk about. I could see it would be appropriate on the one hand. On the other hand, I don't know that the issues that this body deals with are really specific to high school level. And so my inclination is to expand it. And also to expand it, because if it's adults who are affiliated with high school students in one way or another, that might be a fairly constrained pool to try to draw from. So there's sort of both the policy side, and then there's the pragmatic side.
Yes, that's a good catch. I think we had discussed our intention slash encouraged that it be high school, but I don't know if we had said it was required to be high school.
Yeah, I'm going to say, I mean, high school student age, yes, but I think our intention wasn't necessarily to keep it just to, you know, like, coaches, educators, whatever, in a high school range. I think it was just, that was more of a generalized educators across the board, or coaches, et cetera.
Right. Any other comments? So far, it seems like we need two amendments, maybe one in the, on the second page, to basically just remove the word "high" in front of every use of the word "school" there. And then another specifying that the RISE commission will act as the SEJC for the purposes of the sugar, sweetened beverage tax.
Exactly.
Sorry. I don't think it's every reference to "high." It's only reference to "high" in terms of the adult. If we were to literally do what you said, it would no longer be a high school student.
I think he's referring to line 20 on page two specifically, which references the adult part of it.
Yes, I think so. Line 19 and 20, I think, of page two. We'd remove...
Well, if you remove "high" from 19, then you, yeah, you would be...
It could be a middle schooler.
Yeah, you'd be getting rid of the requirement that if it is filled with a high school student...
Excuse me. I was being confused. So if you'd like to make a motion and do it better, you have my full support.
Okay. So I move passage of Resolution 2023-17 with the deletion of the word "high" on line 20 of page two, and the addition of a resolve that, for the purposes of meeting the requirements of the sugar, sweetened beverage tax ordinance, this commission will act in the capacity of the Social and Economic Justice Commission.
How does that language work?
Yes, and if you can give me some flexibility to add to it, I understand the purpose.
Okay, great. Yes, you have that flexibility.
I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded. Clerk, can we please call the roll?
Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank staff and the subcommittee once again for doing the work.
Echoed. That brings us to our last...
Thank you for making a motion.
Brings us to our last bit of unfinished business, 10-3, which is an update on the student and student-related city advisory body seats, which we've just had a prelude to. Is this from staff or from our vice mayor?
Go for it.
So I was able to attend the AUSD board meeting on March 15th. I think it was a great beginning of a discussion. I think there were a lot of concerns and comments that came up during the meeting, and I summarized some of those below. I think there was a little bit of, both between new board members and frankly, myself, not fully understanding the exact process in which the appointments were made in the past. There were some questions about what is the appointment process, what is the application process? And there was very much a conversation about AUSD board members and staff receiving lots of phone calls, asking the AUSD board to make their appointments to commissions. And so there was some concern. And I expressed at that time that part of the reason why AUSD had not received the applicants was that the city council was actually discussing what AUSD, whether they were AUSD appointments or AUSD recommendations, and so that is the reason why. I also mentioned that, at that time, AUSD not making appointments did not prohibit commissions or committees from meeting so long as they had a quorum. So I essentially deflected back to the fact that we as a council, I myself, still have to appoint to now the RISE commission, that had the council actually made all their appointments, or at least made a quorum, in particularly, generally speaking, for, commissions could have started meeting. So I let them know that they can deflect those towards us as a council. I also, you know, I think there were a lot of questions about, well, wait a minute, how does this actually work, right? You're going from an appointment process to a recommendation process? Who's reaching out to the other schools? I emphasized that the memos that were provided emphasized that it was going to be on staff and council to reach out to the other schools. And I think, you know, going through all the things that are in my notes, I think the big thing that came from it was just a question about the complexity of the current process, right? And so I think that led to just a series of tables that I started to create, mostly to just keep track of, wait a minute, what do we, exactly, how does this work today? What did our February 7th memo say? And then I ended up creating another memo that said, well, you know, this is kind of my understanding of what we all have talked about. And that's really for discussion as a council. Also had the opportunity to converse with the city manager a little bit on, well, we put forth these ideas to have a conversation, to start a conversation with AUSD, but there were some details that were missing, you know, timeline, well, what's the actual application process? How do we actually make, who actually making the appointment, and how does that recommendation work? And so the city manager, I put together the memo that just talks about some ideas to talk about. And again, I would offer that these are all really for us as a starting point for conversation, because I believe, in essence, in considering the change from an appointment to a recommendation, we as the city council now are essentially making two at-large decisions, because as a recommendation, it really means that we are making, much like we just said in RISE, we are actually making the appointments. And so then that raises a whole series of questions about what exactly is AUSD's role in this process? And so, let's see, I guess we could, could we bring up the tables from 10-3? Because I think that was a good starting point for me to understand. And I created a first table that just said, these commissions, AUSD does not currently make an appointment to. And so Financial Advisor Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Transportation Commission. I did not list Police and Fire Pension, because that's a little bit of a different kind of And then I listed out, you know, what is the situation right now? It's a little out of date, because it lists Social Economic Justice as two AUSD appointments. If we go to the next slide, Ann. But also, one of the things in the background that I was provided, I realized that actually Climate Action is the only committee or commission where we explicitly, in our language today, say, it shall be a student. And so that's a big change. And so I created the next slide, which is February 7th's recommendations that we as a council came together in our memo. Wait, did I? All right, yes. And so this is where we explicitly said that one would be a student and the second could be an adult, or another high school student. And then the last one, I just modified it really to say, essentially, it is a council at large, student and school-affiliated adult. I did make one item, bring one item for consideration, which is Transportation Commission does not have representation from our youth or from a representative from the schools. And given the nexus between our schools and that we pay for school crossing guards, I thought it would be something for us to discuss, whether or not we want to expand transportation to include youth representation and an adult affiliated with the school. The other memo goes into more details, because there are questions about terms. The AUSD board has two student representatives. Both of them were very much in favor of the current Climate Action process, in which the student is appointed at the end of the school year and then serves two years. They felt that that worked well with the timing at the high school. And so they were much in favor with that. They were actually pretty excited about it, because in terms of what items are going on at the campus right now, it's something that they could feed into and start to really get the word out. There are some concerns that that may or may not work well for St. Mary's, that may or may not work well at Tilden Prep and/or homeschool students, where that timing would be different, right? It's different than the adults. It would also separate the students, because the students would be arriving and joining commissions, not at the normal time, when potentially a whole series of new people are being seated. And so I think one of the questions before us as a council is, do we want to follow the Climate Action Committee process of the end of the junior year? Or do we want to follow, have the students also apply at the same time that adults are applying for these commissions and committees? That does likely raise the need to just make sure that we get the word out more at all the schools in Albany and to the youth. I think that's the gist of what the two memos had and these tables had, and really just wanted to bring it back for conversation.
Thank you for preparing this and presenting on it and going to the meeting. Any questions from council?
It did occur to me, considering this, if, I think the terms of advisory body members are defined in the city charter, and so in that regard, what we've been doing in terms of the student terms probably isn't quite in alignment with what the city charter says. So in doing this, that might just be something to bookmark for 2024, if we want to have different terms for the student seats, that we want to clean that up and make it aligned. I did have another question, which is, I think I read in the memo or somewhere, the suggestion and/or requirement to appoint rising juniors. However, if that was done, that would mean every other class at the high school would not have this opportunity. So I'm not sure how to deal with that. I mean, there's obviously benefit to being on a body for two years, because there is learning curve. On the other hand, it's not fair for every other class to not have that opportunity. So I'm not sure how to square that circle. So I'm not sure how to square that circle.
I think one of the things that was under consideration as well is, were we to have the students apply at the same time as adults? We as a commission would have the opportunity to review everyone who's considering and potentially, like I did on the Climate Action Committee, appoint a student as my representative. And that we're not necessarily limiting ourselves to one student to be appointed on those commissions where there's only one seat or two when it's, when there's potential for two students or a student and an adult affiliated with the school. And I, I think to me, that's probably the most swaying argument for shifting away from the CAC process because we as a, as a group will get to see all applicants at one time. And I, so the other twist to that, I would add that for the, for, I would ask probably to work, want to work with staff to ask the question of whether or not, sorry, to add the question about whether or not any adults applying are actually affiliated with the schools or use words so that actually we're getting, we can see that there might be many applicants who are actually able to fill that. And there would be one at large, but that could also be a factor that council members could take into account as they make appointments as well.
You raised a question with me, it's like, now, I know we're not limited as far as how many students we can appoint? Or, I mean, what if we were all to appoint? Would that be valid for a committee or a commission? To like, say, we did appoint everyone at the same time and say each one of us chose a student, would that still work actively as a committee or a commission within the city charter?
Meaning that all of the members are students?
Yeah, so they were all students, is that?
I don't think there's any prohibition.
I'm trying to remember the 18-year-old-
There is, there is one commission-
-but it was an election, right?
Correct.
There is one commission that requires members to be 18 years old. And I think it's the Policing Commission. In the backup that you gave me, Nicole, there was one that specified, everyone had to be over the age of 18.
But you could have a student in theory that is 18.
I-
Just may not, the term may not-
Or it might be internally- Might contradict itself internally. Yeah, it might be internally inconsistent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the con of appointing a student mid-academic year is unless they're a sophomore, they are not going to be able to serve through, serve for two years. It won't be, and they won't be able to serve through the entire session. So, so there's that. I guess, could you say more about the, how the schedule might not work for students at other schools that are homeschooled?
What I would say is we don't know that it would align as well as it does at AUSD. So AUSD is about to go, they're about to do elections. They're about to do, all of their volunteer groups are about to do presentations, really gearing people up to think about next year and what they might want to do. And so my understanding was that that's one of the reasons why the AUSD students were really excited about the timing. Versus, my son went to St. Mary's for one year, but I'm not sure if they do elections and when they do elections or what events happen on campus. I simply added that information just to make sure that while I'm relaying what I heard about AUSD, I do not know what Tilden Prep does or what St. Mary's does. I have a all-out to the principal at St. Mary's, but I'm waiting to hear back.
Okay. So it's not a, okay, so it's not a difference of academic year, which seemed like it couldn't be that. It's more what happens when within the academic year? Okay, thank you.
I think we should take public comment and then we can bring it back for more discussion.
Sorry, yes.
Nothing.
Okay, let's go to public comment.
Jeremiah here, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Vice Mayor Mickey, for attending the school board meeting. God was nice to see you there. Yeah, so interesting, a lot of this is just kind of, seems kind of like we're all just winging it here, kind of put this thing together and hopefully it works out. You know, there's, there's a lot of details, right? You know, let's say you get a student. I think the city charter basically says if you're a commissioner or city council member, you have to reside in the city. So what if the student lives in Kensington? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, I just heard someone talking. Yeah, so what if the student, you know, doesn't live in Albany? Is that, does the charter need to be updated to where now commissioners can live out of the city? So that's, that's one detail that, that needs to be worked out. Also, you know, it's, it's great, I think we should definitely encourage students, right? I mean, I think that's the goal here for city council. What if the school board decides they, they don't want to agree to your terms? What if the school board says, hey, you know, we want to appoint whoever we want? You know, they're, they're their own district. You know, they, what if they want to appoint whoever they want? I mean, they can definitely encourage students, for sure. But, you know, there's summer break, so students usually don't attend meetings hypothetically, of course, during the summer. So there's three months one year, three months the other year. So there's half a year, you know, possibly not even making quorum in case, you know, two people don't make it. I, I think we should definitely encourage the school district and we should guide them and say, hey, city council, this is, we encourage you to appoint a student. You know, but what if it's, it doesn't work out in their schedule? You know, it's kind of risky making it mandatory that they have to appoint a student. It definitely should be encouraged. I agree. I would love to see more youth participating. You know, and just anybody in general. But yeah, so I, I mean, it sounds like, I just don't think there's really going to be an April meeting. I mean, there's, I think there's a school district meeting on the 28th of this month, but for them to finally appoint somebody before the first Tuesday in April, not likely. But, yeah, just, just good luck, everybody. Who knows what the school board is going to say, right? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello, this is Elaine Stelton. I had a child at Tilden Prep, and they have a lot of flexibility with their schedule there. So I would highly recommend that you reach out to them. The students work one-on-one with a teacher. So they are not locked into any sort of rigid schedule like, you know, the other schools. So please, please do reach out. Take good care and thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Well, to respond to something from public comment, and then I have a couple comments about the decision points here. As we've discussed before, it's important to clarify, this is not a case of us dictating to the school district what they can do in a thing, in a, you know, in their own bailiwick. We are talking about appointments to city commissions. So this is a chance for cooperation that the city offers to the school district. And so it is pretty reasonable for us to put some guidelines in and decide a little bit how that process should be for how they appoint to our commissions. But I, you know, we've heard this before when we discussed this pretty much every time of, you know, why are we dictating this? And it's, it should really be clear. This is a case of the city dictating how appointments should be made to city commissions, not how the school board conducts its business within its own purview. I, another thing that was brought up was, that we've discussed a little bit was recruiting students as well as, we just heard that Tilden Prep has a lot of flexibility. I think reaching out to different schools as well as reaching out to students to try and recruit them, that's, you know, as, John, I think you said to the school board, that's our job. I think we should be proactive about that. I think that's, you know, there's some that we can do in a staff level for that, but I'm happy to volunteer myself. I'll go to schools and talk in advisory periods if we need someone to. I'm happy to go to Tilden Prep as well. Having graduated from Albany High School and taken a class at Tilden Prep, alumni of both, I'm happy to go and talk to them. And I think that, that, you know, even doing that sort of simple stuff could have a pretty big effect of having people apply. You know, if it's more than an email that goes out from the principal, if it's someone saying, hey, there are these, there are these openings, so if you apply, there's a good chance you'll get it. And they look really good on a college application. So I think there's a lot that can be done there. And on the timeline, you know, if the CAC timeline works for getting students appointed, then that is probably what we should use if it's what, you know, functions. And as long as we build enough flexibility there for St. Mary's and Tilden and people who are homeschooled, you know, a long enough application period, a clear enough date, as long as we're communicating, then I think we can make that work for everybody. John, you had your-
I was just going to take up your offer on volunteering to speak about this, to say that I'm hoping to have a table at the Community Expo on April 29th where council members, board or commission members could be there to speak about what it means, what it means for them to give back to the community in service. And it's an opportunity for us trying to continue to recruit. You know, not necessarily for this commission and committees now, but long-term, plant the seed in people's ideas that you don't need to be a subject matter expert. You don't need to dedicate your entire life to that committee or commission, that it is, you are able to serve in, in, in many ways. So I'm just going to note that I'm going to take you up on that and have you pencil on April 29th.
All right, sounds good. Any other discussion from council?
I just want to also throw my two cents in here, and I know I've been relatively quiet this evening. But I recently attended the accountability group meeting and something that reminds me of, you know, what we're discussing right now is, I witnessed several youth at that meeting and speak. And it gives me full confidence that we're not going to have any shortages of youth who want to step up when they realize that there are opportunities available to them, especially when young people are looking for ways to stand out on college applications. It was a half joke, but it wasn't a joke. There, you know, students are trying, one, to stand out, but two, to really show and demonstrate their skills, to really actualize their potential. Very similar to how all of us stepped up and ran for city council at one point in our life. Some of us very recent. But it was to demonstrate that we are ready to serve and ready to lead. And there was no shortage of people who ran for city council during the last election. Hopefully, there won't be no shortage in the next cycle. In the similar vein, specific to students and young people, I don't think we're going to have a shortage of young folks wanting to step up so that, assuming we get the information out to them. And I don't think that's difficult either, considering the level of connectedness that we all have in our respective spaces. Some of us are plugged in with some of the affinity groups in the school district. I oddly am well on my way to becoming a softball dad. You know, so trust that I will be dropping words in the ears of other parents during games. But there are definitely ways for us to just have these authentic, organic connections, whether it's at an expo, whether it's me sneaking in cheap shots at the softball game to, hey, you should join. Or tapping in with the affinity group, checking in with folks from Tilden Prep. And I just thought that was like really dope that someone put in a plug for Tilden Prep while here. So, all that to say, a long-winded way of saying, I don't think we're going to have much of a challenge seeing this through and making this happen effectively and, you know, most importantly, empowering for our young folks and their parents, who often feel like they don't get to have a say in what's going on, their child's educational endeavors are their future. Policies we implement here citywide do impact their families. And this is their opportunity to get involved, but at a very scaled approach.
Focusing on details, as I often do. So that, I agree on the timing question. To keep it with what has worked on CAC, I would not restrict it to rising juniors. I know that can make things potentially more complicated in terms of if it's a rising senior, then, then we have to find another student halfway through the session. But I think out of fairness, that's work we need to take on if we're going to go this, this way. I would add, and I thank the vice mayor for the table, seeing that table may realize, probably the best, both just for consistency, to be able to remember, as well as for policy, to transition the two councils as a whole appointees on climate action and on the arts committee to align it the same way. So the table we put together, those, those wouldn't, currently not, don't have requirements to be school affiliated adults. But then they would be the odd bodies out. And that doesn't, I don't see any reason that they should be the odd bodies out. I mean, certainly, climate action affects the next generation and arts are strong at the schools, so. And that would also simplify what we have to remember, or at least what I have to remember.
Sorry?
Yeah, sure.
You mentioned arts committee. Arts committee, I believe, the council as a whole is designated for business?
Yeah, I don't know if we, did we keep that or did we? I can't remember what, is that currently what it is? I thought there was some change to that, but I don't remember if-
It's loosely written. I think it was more advisory for one individual at the time. Double check.
It was, it was actually to include a business owner. It was Robbie Abrams.
As an option.
Yeah, because he owns a studio in Albany and is an artist in Albany, but was not a resident. So we were trying to include that to, to be able to allow him as a business owner within the city to serve on that committee.
So is that, is that a requirement of the seat currently or?
You know, given council direction, that can be modified. So I think what we would do this evening is take all the direction, prepare it into an updated guiding. I'll just leave it a document from now because we'll need to work out exactly what, what the formal adoption looks like. And we could reflect the consistency you noted.
Okay. And maybe with that history, for that, that one and only seat latitude could be provided or remain for a business owner as well?
Yeah, we can look into that.
The choice can be made if there is a business owner.
If I may. With, with the one area that I understand there's interest both ways with regard to the appointment term, I think it would be highly beneficial for the council to continue to consider the opportunity for it to coincide for consistency and simplicity purposes, as well as administrative overhead for there to be a single application process with the existing application process, meaning the standard two-year term. Again, we're not quite sure what each school entails necessarily, but there's a few other reasons that we may want to think of in terms of inclusivity and feeling that you are part of the starting group. And we've experienced that while our students are incredibly adaptable, you have a group, a group of adults. You come in a few years, a few months in, they've already made those relationships and they've already had our Brown Act and advisory body training as a team. as a team, and as a larger collective team across all the advisory bodies in person in that setting. So I think we would be doing a disservice potentially to those students who are esteeming themselves to participate at that level. Some things for consideration, certainly whatever the council directs, we will implement into your next policy documents.
I would, a little bit about the timing as well. I don't think we should assume or discount the fact that not all Albany students go to college away from Albany, or not all Albany students leave Albany.
My son's sitting in his bedroom right now, so...
Yeah. So, you know, they might be attending a local community college, they might be attending UC Berkeley and living at home. And so while it could cause, there could be situations where we have to make new appointments that serve out three or four months, or if we end up appointing a senior and they end up serving a year, or, you know, there's always that danger. There's always the danger that a commissioner or a committee member will have to be replaced. And so, to me, I fully understand that, but I'm also thinking that not all of our students are going to leave Albany when they graduate from high school.
That's correct. I mean, we all, just like you said, we have no guarantee that even though you're an adult and you're appointed to one of these, that you're going to remain for the entire two years. So I wholeheartedly agree with you there. And like, for, just as myself, I mean, when I graduated Albany High, I didn't leave. I was still here, still serving my community, not going off to college, not doing that stuff. So I wouldn't limit, like you said, to be like, just assume that somebody's just going to be gone right away.
So in that regard, I hadn't thought about this. The individual would be a student when they're appointed, but they wouldn't necessarily have to be a student the whole way, the whole time they're serving, is the implication of that, which is...
That's true. They would definitely not be a high school student at that point.
They would just start as a high school student.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right. Yeah. I mean, yeah, they wouldn't be a student of a school in Albany, or a high school in Albany, which I think is okay. I hadn't really thought about it, but yeah, I think it's okay. And I thank the city manager, I think that was a, she made a point that was persuasive to me in terms of, you know, group cohesion and relationships. And thinking back to how shy I was at that age, it'd be hard enough coming into the room with all the other adults, and then to come into the room after all the other adults, that would be even more difficult.
Right. Yes. This is, like you said, this is also, not everyone who we appoint serves the whole term. So we often have to make appointments in the middle, and that's sort of, it becomes incumbent on us to get that done, to some extent. This would also be, if that happened here, it would also be incumbent on AUSD to then consider that new appointment, and then on us to make it. But the outreach would be on us.
Not just AUSD.
Sorry, thank you.
And I think...
Need a shorthand for them plus everyone else.
Mayor, I think that raises, you know, one of the questions is, what is the ask of AUSD, right? Is AUSD actually making a recommendation? And I will say, this is why I changed the language in the last table. Are they making a recommendation, or are they helping us with the outreach? And I raise this because if AUSD makes a recommendation, they're only one of multiple school-age groups that would be in front of the council. And so, in essence, are they really making a recommendation, or is the ask of them to help get information out, to allow us to come on campus and have conversations with students, whether it's at their government class, or at fairs that they have the opportunity to talk about serving on committees and commissions? And I think that's a bit of a change in what we've talked about, but I keep thinking back to the fact that when the language changed from appointment to recommendation, I don't think I completely in my mind processed that, let alone what does that mean, that AUSD makes a recommendation, but we're asking St. Mary, do you have a student? We're asking Tilden, do you have a student? We're asking students who are schooled at home, are there any students? You know, whose recommendation do we take? Right? And so is it really that we're asking AUSD to help us in getting the word out, to provide these opportunities to their students?
I think we're doing a bit of both to cheat in this answer. But I think we're asking for help with outreach, though we're hoping that we'll do the lion's share of it. And I think we are still asking for a recommendation, especially with the assumption of, well, we would really want to have students apply from everywhere. I think probably most of them will end up coming from AUSD. And so when there's a case, you know, if we get five applications of students for a position, all of which are from AUSD, then it's very simple. They can then look at those and make a recommendation, and then we will appoint based on that recommendation. Whereas if we have a situation where they get some, you know, there are some applications from AUSD, and they can make a recommendation, but we also get a recommendation from St. Mary's, then I think it does become up to us to say, okay, we have these two, we can maybe look at, how much representation do we have from AUSD? How much do we have from St. Mary's? What are the merits of both these applications? Just like when we're looking at applications normally. So I think they're still doing both, but you're right, the nature of that has changed a little bit.
And one of the things that I was thinking about, if we go through that process where AUSD is actually making a recommendation, is, you know, is this a situation where AUSD would actually, much like we as a council, have access to applicants as they're applying? Is this something where AUSD essentially has access to the students that applied as they apply, as opposed to waiting until after council has made their selection? And I raise that also because the school-affiliated recommendation, if that's also going to be an AUSD recommendation, that really should be a question of all adults that apply. And so AUSD is really getting a chance to understand, like, the breadth of people who are affiliated to a school or a youth program when they make their recommendation. And I think frankly, it'll help us as a council as well understand those ties, that it's possible that we will nominate more than one person who has a strong tie to the schools. But I think getting that information would be great in the application process.
Well, and I think in the application process, if we could add in there somehow, then some sort of a staff letter of recommendation for whoever is, you know, pulling papers to, or, you know, applying for this position, is that part of that application process is to also have an adult representative recommend, submit a recommendation letter along with their application. Is that possible?
Well, I want to go back to process, just to walk through what this application process looks like. The city clerk receives all the applications and facilitates that process with the council. Adding in an additional layer with any other agency is going to be highly complex administratively. We don't necessarily have a city clerk to hand this off to at any of the schools, nor is it necessarily foundational in their day-to-day activities. So while they have many responsibilities and obligations that they perform exceptionally well, I have concerns that the process is going to get really complicated and probably slow down appointments effectively. I think that the schools would likely do a much better job partnering with our elected officials, and maybe partnering at that level to promote and encourage applications that go through your standard process. I think that over time, you will find that much more effective and efficient. Again, our three schools and our at-home students have other priorities as well. And based on our experience with the current process, prior to the nomination duty, it's been spotty over the years, again, because they have other work they're working on, not to discredit their process whatsoever. So I think I'll stop there as I find I'm rambling.
Yeah, I think I agree with that. And the, I think the schools could be provided the option to make a recommendation, and they can do so or not, but by a set time. And they don't need to have access to the applications to make that recommendation. And so I do think that would simplify what's happened in the past, it would simplify it for the schools, for the various schools, because some may want to, some may not. Any particular school may vary from one year to the next, whether they want to take it on or not. You know, it's not something I see the Board of Education necessarily taking a lot of time to interview. I mean, we're talking about six different bodies, interview, you know, 12 or 18 students to make a recommendation for one of each of each of those bodies. I just don't, you know, I don't know that that would be a great use of their time. And they would have the option if they want to, so I'm not saying foreclose it by any means, but I'd be surprised if the board chose to spend its time that way. So I think, I think having it as an alternative that's available to them, but not a requirement, and otherwise just going with the process as it is. I do like the idea of letters of recommendation. And so maybe in the application, it wouldn't be a requirement, but there'd be a footnote check here if you're a student. And if you're a student, you know, you're invited to submit letters of recommendation from teachers or whoever you want. And I think that has some additional benefit, because that's a good life skill to have, you know, as you go forward in one's career.
Any further thoughts, or?
I think there is one other item that maybe we didn't completely, fully touch on yet, and that was whether they had to reside in Albany. And I'll just say, my thought process on it is that they should just attend a school in Albany. It doesn't mean that they actually have to physically live in the city, because I don't want to limit, you know, any transfer students from being able to apply for this. I want to try to include as many of our youth as possible.
Yep, I'd agree with that.
Could I clarify? The homeschool students would have to be Albany residents, correct?
Yeah.
Their school has to be...
In Albany. Unless they have a very complicated homeschooling arrangement.
Yeah, right.
Any other thoughts, or have we touched on everything?
I think so. If the council would like to provide direction on next steps, we can coordinate on what that documentation looks like for your consideration at an upcoming meeting, and shape some of what we've heard to make sure we've captured it correctly.
That would be great. And if there's something else?
I do have a question. Do, Vice Mayor, do you think we need to go back to the board before we, or, I mean, I guess we go back to the board on, maybe if they would give us time on the 28th. I mean, I'm eager to move this forward, so we can get these seats filled.
Sorry, just as Mayor Tiedemann was mentioning, just to re-clarify, this is our seats. This doesn't necessarily have to do with AUSD making any decision here. This is our decision.
I agree with that, but, I mean, they are a co-equal agency, as I view it. And so as a matter of courtesy, to get their final ideas on where we've landed, which doesn't change the direction, they're providing staff, so the staff can prepare the documents for us to effect this change. But I wouldn't, I guess I'm answering my own question. I mean, I don't know where it was left, because I haven't watched the meeting, I wasn't at the meeting, but I'm more inclined to going back than not.
I believe they would love to get an update. I think there was likely some confusion as about whether or not AUSD had to vote on anything. Given that we were discussing making, changing it from an appointment to a recommendation, it's not really something they would have voted about. It was really about getting their input. But I also recognize that this is a relationship that will continue, even with the changes that we're talking about, because we will still continue to work closely with them. And, you know, I think, particularly from my vantage point, having representation on transportation isn't really important, because I think one of the things that I put in for recommendation, which we did not discuss, was that those that are applying to be that school-affiliated are able and willing to do communication with the schools, because that really is the purpose of that appointment. If you're not able and willing to do that, you can still be appointed to the commission. It's just you're not necessarily filling the particular seat that is intended to help create some dialogue. And that's not necessarily going to the board, but making sure that information is, that maybe they're very active in speaking at the school, or in other ways. But I think that was one of the things I put in for recommendation, for consideration, because otherwise, otherwise I'm not sure why that isn't just an at-large seat, and it's not necessarily specifically for the school. Because if they're not actively either representing the school by both creating a dialogue and coming to it from the vantage point of the school, then it's really just another appointment by council.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think the language was be willing and able to conduct outreach at schools.
Correct, correct. Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I wonder if communication isn't better than outreach, because those have slightly different connotations. So I don't know what your thoughts are on making it. Because I think it's more important for the person to communicate, like, to the principal of that school.
Yeah.
Hey, there's going to be a change, rather than outreach to the whole school community.
Yes. Sorry, I think that's more appropriate to what I was thinking.
Okay, so...
Having that person that can talk to the principal, to make sure that, you know, they know that something's happening on Key Route.
Right, yeah.
That they know that a 15-mile per zone area is being talked about next to the schools.
Right, right. And then the principal can do the outreach if they think that's appropriate, or the board, or whoever. Okay. Would that, would that apply to those adult, school-affiliated seats on the other bodies? I'm not, I haven't really thought about it one way or the other. So maybe that's something we don't...
I gotta fill out my cheat sheet.
We don't decide now, and we have that as an optionality in the, any instruments that come to us.
Yeah, I mean, I think the communication part would apply. I think it's up to the appointee to understand what makes sense to communicate.
Decide to communicate, yeah.
So Parks and Rec, you know, if it has to do with Memorial Park...
Yeah.
Principal of the high school probably wants to know.
Yeah.
Has to do with Ocean View Park, principal of Ocean View probably wants to know.
Yeah, okay.
Less clear about policing or rimes, right, but...
Yeah, okay. It's probably good to have in there. And I will also note that aligning the appointment schedule with the appointments of all the other members takes care of the charter issue. There wasn't a charter?
There's a lot of...
Okay.
Particularly for councils.
Okay, great.
For future reference.
Okay, thanks.
Any last words? Being none, we will move on to our council subcommittee and regional body reports. And I will start down over there.
Oh, I'm on the hot seat.
Yes.
I attended the Alameda County Mayor's meeting. That was really fun to be down in Newark. I also attended two Cal Cities webinars slash discussion sessions. One on what the state is doing, and what communities are doing to address fentanyl, another one on general update on legislation that's under consideration. I think things, there are three bills in particular that I wanted to bring council's awareness of. There are two fentanyl bills that I think are important for us as a community to understand. And I'm going to look them up, because I was not 100% ready for this. So AB 24, Emergency Response, opioid antagonist, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, kits. And this is a bill being proposed to require Narloxin, which is the generic... And this is a bill being proposed to require Narloxxan, which is the generic name for Narcan, to be at bars, gas stations, public libraries, and hotels. A little bit of detail on that, the state would actually fund for those items, so that it's not a burden on those businesses, although the businesses may or may not want to actually have them. But that is one item that's under consideration. I think that's important just to understand that that impacts, potentially impacts our community and that our businesses will be asked to have those. It also means that there'd be more accessibility to Narcan. The other one that's important is AB 1166, liability for Narloxxan hydrochloride administration. This would allow anyone without medical training and administering Narloxxan in good faith, that should anything occur, unfortunately occur, that they could not be held liable. And then, to me, that's a pretty big deal for, I think, both the people with, under AB 24, who would have Narloxxan, that they could apply it. It also means that it may reduce some liability that the city has, although that is likely in the details of the bill. But I thought those were two important ones to bring to attention of the council. And then one other bill that came up, which I am going to try and find, AB 817, local government, open meetings. It would allow advisory body members to attend meetings remotely via Zoom or teleconference, without going through all the rigmarole that's currently in the Brown Act. And I think that's going to be incredibly powerful from an equity standpoint. Those who can't make it to the meeting all the time would be able to participate still. So I think that's going to be something that's really great, and it's going to be really appropriate for our youth members as well. So I just thought those were important things that I heard about. There are a lot of bills, and most of these bills do not make it out, but I thought these three were pretty important.
Thank you for that update. Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, so still working on hashing out the next date for the Gilchak Farm Advisory Group meeting, though I did take a tour of the farm with the volunteers to get an idea of the space and what their exact needs or expectations are from city council standpoint, but also just to understand the dynamics and relationship that they also have with the UC. So I guess I'll stop short there on all of that. And then, you know, not formally on list, but the accountability group that I did allude to earlier, was a very productive meeting, good mix of community members, and even former council member Peggy McQuade was there, which I thought was pretty cool. And it was a really good opportunity for people to start opening up dialogue and conversation, but I also mentioned it too, because that could be an opportunity for the new RISE Commission to interface with the community in ways in which might be, they might be looking for forum for specific topics that have been difficult for the SCJC to get going just because of logistical issues. And I did make clear to the folks that were in attendance in that meeting that we are actively working on seeking out consultant for a racial equity survey plan, that hopefully that would yield very good information for this accountability group. Saying all that too, because they do plan on making this a very, they do plan on making these frequent meetings, which I thought was really interesting, so it's not just a one-off, like, hey, we're going to talk about why we're so angry about things, but they really do want to look for solutions. And part of that was bringing in the high school students to give a presentation. I just sat there wondering, like, wow, the students got figured it out. They've figured it out. Adult take notes, myself included. But I think this may be an opportunity for council to have a standing member appointed to that group, if this does in fact become a very, become a frequent meeting. That could be something to be discussed at a later time. But I encourage every council member to attend the next session if possible. It's just, it's very refreshing to hear some of the good things that are coming from the community members, but it's also very humbling to hear some of the challenges that community members are dealing with that don't always come across our council agenda or our attention.
Thank you. And speaking of former council member Peggy McQuade, she has a written report in our agenda on the Housing Authority's last meeting on March 8th. They seem to have a very productive meeting, so I'm not going to try and summarize all of it, but they made a new housing agency plan for the next fiscal year, amended one of their contracts, had a revised procurement policy pass, and appointed a scholarship for the Housing Authority Scholarship Program, among some other things. So I encourage anyone who wants more details to read that full report, and I thank the former council member for writing it. I have two. I attended an EBCE meeting where we had two things. One, that EBCE, partly because we are expanding to Stockton, is starting a possible sort of rebranding effort, as Stockton isn't really the East Bay, so they may have to find something new to call themselves, or how to call themselves Stockton. And then we had a very interesting project pass that is buying resource adequacy, which is essentially, we're not really buying power, we're buying backup, backup power. And if you ask me to get into the technical details, it will not go super well, because RA is super complicated. But it's a, it's a natural gas plant that already exists, that because we are buying resource adequacy, is adding batteries that will be able to collect power while that plant is idling. So while it is a gas plant, this is actually a move that will decrease its emissions factor, which is a, you know, EBCE does not really, mostly does solar and battery storage for these sorts of projects, but this is a different one that is beneficial, even though it's natural gas. And we're not, we're not getting any natural gas power from it. Then there was an ABAG executive meeting on the 16th. There are a couple of things from that. We supported some legislation. I think the only one I'm going to highlight is ACA 1, which is the constitutional amendment to lower the threshold for bonds for transportation and housing measures, from a supermajority to, I believe, 55%, which would be very, very beneficial. And the, a lot of the rest of that meeting was talking about a big financial issue that we share with ABAG, which is that they have a big unfunded liability for a pension plan that they had before they merged with MTC, which for them is an even bigger problem than it is for us, because that pension plan is 50% of their operating budget for admin, which is quite significant. So there was a lot of discussion of how they were going to meet that, and I think that was it.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Lopez, for attending the accountability working meeting. Look forward to, and I'm excited to hear that that might go on, that it wasn't just a one-off. I attended a meeting of the, oh, I'm already, I'm already embedded in jargon here with this agency, Planning Policy and Legislation Committee of the Alameda County Transportation Commission. I guess the one item I'll highlight from there is that that body recommended adoption of an, of a inclusive engagement report. So this has a number of policies that the agency would follow to reach outside of the sort of normal circle and normal voices that know to come to the table, to get a wider range of inputs on its projects, and a whole host of mechanisms to do that, which I think is, will benefit the agency tremendously. And then attended the actual meeting of the commission, and the item I'll report from that is that it's partnering with EBCE. Well, it's actually, maybe not quite partnering, it's contributing funding to an EBCE program to subsidize purchases of electric bicycles, and with particular focus, I think 40% of the funding will be targeted to households with low incomes. And that program, the other leg of that program is the EBCE will have loaner e-bikes, so that people can actually experience it before, you know, make, or in order to help them make a decision whether to purchase or not. It is an EBCE program. The commission is matching it dollar-for-dollar, one-for-one. I can't remember the number, I think it was $4 million over two years. So, yeah.
So I did attend a stop-waste meeting, but it was more of a, they have separate breakouts, they have more of the financial part, and then I do have another one coming up actually in another couple of days. But really, it was based upon, you know, how they look at their finances. Oh, thank you. How their, how their budgeting process is working and where, you know, their tonnage fees are, you know, paying for their budget, and they're, they're on kind of a different path, because they're anticipating their tonnage fees to go down, and therefore their income to also go down. So now they're also looking at potentially in the next, say around four or five years, really grabbing hold more of that educational piece, because that's really kind of where they've started to gravitate more to, is more education outreach. And so that'll be something that will be coming up in the future, talking further about how they're going to continue doing their funding moving forward over the next course of years. But they're, they're fully funded right now, very solid in what they're doing. They've got a really incredible group of people there, and I didn't get a cookie, but I did get a pastry.
They held on on me. I didn't know they had pastries. Yeah, it's an unusual agency, because its mission is to end itself, essentially. So, yeah, they have a huge amount of reserves, which kind of surprised me when I came in. They're like, yeah, we have to have reserves, because we're ending our own financing.
It's really incredible. I've never, I was like, wow, that makes sense, though.
Thank you all for the updates. Do we have any public comment? Do you have one minute?
I just want to thank city council. I just want to thank Vice Mayor Mickey. It's surprising to hear that you guys are, you know, involved in this forefront of the fentanyl. It's just really inspiring. It's really great. I could sleep good tonight, knowing that someone on city council is on top of this. And I can just kind of, you know, sit back and relax and just kind of let you guys take over. So it's just kind of, I could finally take a nice deep breath and get a little weight off my shoulders. So thank you, Councilmember Mickey. But I encourage every other city council member to, you know, get involved with fentanyl awareness, attend summit meetings, anything you can, in support of fentanyl awareness and education in Albany. So once again, thank you, Vice Mayor Mickey. Keep up the good work, everybody.
Thank you for your comment. Is that the only one? That brings us to future agenda items. Does anyone in council have a future agenda item they would like to suggest? Over here? Let's go to public comment.
Yeah, I'm just going to suggest future agenda items, something regarding fentanyl. Whether it's supporting a Senate bill, 1060, or some sort of assembly bill, or some sort of Senate bill, there's probably at least five or 10 of them about funding for education regarding Narcan or something. So it would be just, it would be nice to see something on the future agenda regarding something about fentanyl and where the city is at on everything and taking action in the moment. Last thing we need is someone else to pass away. So this is definitely important, can save a life of a community member. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you for your comment. That brings us to item 14, announcements of city meetings and events. I'll ask everyone to look to our schedule and note that our next meeting of the city council is in a week, on March 27th. We have a special meeting at 3:00 PM to discuss our strategic plan. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you to the rest of council, city clerks, city managers, city attorney, all the staff who joined us, all the public who stuck with us through the whole meeting. And we're done for the evening. Good night.